Good evening, everybody. I would like to call the March 6th workshop session of the Norwalk Board of Education to order. We will start this meeting with a moment of silence for one of our long-term employees, a paraprofessional, Anne Marie Dustin, who passed away last week. She worked at a number of our schools, including Marvin, Ponus, Wolfbit, and last at Rowayton, where she worked with several special education students. So if we could just have a moment of silence for her. Thank you, and we will now reset the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two topics of our work sessions this evening. The first one will be the high school program of study. As I understand, Adam Reynolds will be leading the presentation.
Mike, Mr. Chairman, before we get started, I wanted to introduce Norwalk High School Principal Reginald Roberts and Ms. Margaret Dolan, who is the fearless leader of our culinary program.
Hey, baby. Welcome, Dr. Adamowski, here with the board. Dr. Costanzo, welcome, and thank you for coming a few streets over to our home. And I'd like you to meet Ms. Dolan and Mr. White, who are heads of our culinary program. She's going to talk a little bit about what you're eating tonight and our aspirations for the future.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Thanks, everybody, for allowing us to cater the event this evening. About 10 years ago, I got a phone call asking if I'd be interested in starting a culinary arts program at Norwalk High School. I'd already created a program at West Haven High School, and they lured me over with a giant kitchen and dreams of, you know, stainless steel tables and whatnot. And when I arrived, there was actually no kitchen. I was in a science lab. And you know what we made at work? And we started with 120 students. The program now is up to well over 400 students interested. This year, privileged enough to be working with Mr. White from Nathan Hale, and he is now, we're able to double in size. So we're hoping, over the next several years, leading into a pathway, we'll be able to develop a program even greater than that. We've been talking with and conversations about a new culinary arts kitchen, which would be crucial for that. But we really think that this is a pathway, this is something students need, they need the hands-on, there's jobs available on the avenue. I think it's going to be successful. So tonight, with students' help, we've made you two vegetarian wraps, one with fresh mozzarella and tomato. We have small chicken salad tartlets. There's also skewers with fresh mozzarella and tomato tortellini. Of course, our famous cookies and brownies. And thank you again for giving us the opportunity to be here. Thanks.
Thank you. (applause) So I just want to provide just a little bit of introduction before we get into the heart of this. Obviously, you have the recommended program of study for you. We're going to make a couple of recommendations as we go along tonight in terms of things that need further study or issues that may not be fully resolved. And, you know, I would just say that while this is a dense document, and it will take some reading on your part, this is a workshop session, and so tonight we're going to present an overview of the high points of it. This is a very important step forward for us. This effort began a year ago, when we began to ask the question, how could high schools that have an above-the-state-average graduation rate have significantly below the state-average SAT scores? How could that be? And the answer is, the program lacks rigor. 20-credit program, as measured in our Next Generation Accountability Plan, only a third of the students reached the college-and-career-ready benchmark. And so historically, we've had about a third of the students who've done very well, gone on to great colleges, benefited greatly from the high school, but it's not working for all students. We have to make it work for 100% of the students, and that is, in fact, one of the goals of your Strategic Operating Plan, to get all students college-and-career-ready. And the rigor of the program is important. Rigor is defined by students taking more courses and higher-level courses. And it's really that experience that enables a student to do well on the SAT, which is a general achievement, general information test. So, very important topic tonight. You are certainly aware of the budget proposal that accompanies that or this. We're going to talk about how we might modify that under the conditions that the city might want us to live with. But in the main, this is, this represents a giant step forward for our high schools and for our school districts of all. I want to introduce Mr. Adam Reynolds, who was on special assignment today, week, during the last portion of this year, worked very closely with Mr. Craig Crawler, Ms. Janine Goss, as well as many of the, as well as the two high school principals and the many department heads, many of whom are here this evening, all who have contributed to this significantly. Hulene as well, in terms of ELL, and again, a very comprehensive document. So Adam or Craig, if you want to get us started.
Okay, folks, welcome. I know that the snow is on everyone's mind, but we are so grateful that we're able to present tonight. This document in front of you represents a monumental shift in the thinking of Norwalk Public Schools, not just in STEM and humanities, but in the way forward, the path forward. We also gave you a copy of the current program of studies, which is the one we're using right now. And while they look different, it's more than just looks. We've always had a robust student catalog, filled with a number of options for students, but what this document represents is really a huge web that connects all of our stakeholders truly into a path that leads to college-and-career readiness. To say that it enables student choice is an understatement. Before we go any further, I want to thank everybody that's here tonight and introduce a few people. Adam Reynolds has done a great job. Janine Goss is also here, Hulene Becker, Kristin Kargman, Ralph Valenzese, Yvette Gorovich. And you see in the audience many teachers and department heads who worked diligently on this book since last November. And I want to put out really a shameless plug for Adam. He was a brilliant choice by Dr. Adamowski to complete the book, and without his steadfast, really shepherding the project to fruition, we would not be here tonight. We're actually a month early. We were originally planning on presenting this to you in April. The reason we're anxious to see you tonight is so we can start the actual high school scheduling process. We hope that rather than death by PowerPoint, you will have the opportunity to ask questions tonight. Adam and I really know the anatomy of the project. Please interrupt us at any point. We have numerous people here who can answer questions live. We're not going to parking lot our questions, and we will have plenty of time at the end for questions as well. When we go to the first slide, what you see, I'm going to ask you just to turn a little bit so you can take in the presentation. It is in front of you as well, in color. And the reason we're really here tonight is exactly what Dr. Adamowski said. We are attempting to significantly raise the bar and close the gap. To move from a 20-credit system, which is what the state of Connecticut currently requires, although they will be going to 25 credits plus a capstone for the graduating class of 2023, that's our freshman class of 2019, is a significant increase. Six additional credits represents approximately a 30% increase in staff, and being kind of a math nerd, I was doing the math today. With 1,688 students at Norwalk High in 1803, at Bryan McMahon, that's an additional 20,946 classes that we have to offer to get the next graduating class of 2022 through the program. That's a minimum of 21 additional teachers to teach 209 sections at 25 students per section each year. So the changes are dramatic. The biggest change you see on the screen behind you is obviously from the 20 to the 26 credits, but you'll see that the state has completely reorganized all of our choices into humanities and STEM, and that is exactly the way the book is organized. Some things that really stick out are the capstone project, as well as other electives. If you look at the 20-credit system, it really doesn't even allow for students to take two or three years of a language because you would use up all of your available electives. And we currently have many students that graduate with many more than 20 credits. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Adam, then I'm going to ask each of the department heads and central office people to come up, and I would encourage you again to ask questions as we go along, and at the end we'll have an interesting discussion about the budget and the transition plan going forward.
First, I want to thank Dr. Adamowski, Dr. Costanzo, Ralph Valenzese, a number of other members of Central Office for allowing me this opportunity to not only grow, but help Norwalk Public Schools take a step forward as well. This was no small task, and I am standing here before you and will describe what the program of studies consists of, but the people behind you did all of the work. They did all the work every single day that they come to Norwalk Public Schools and into the high school. They put together sequences of courses that culminated in real experiences for their students. And with, working with them, we, as a team from both sides of town, really put together a meaningful and rigorous program of study for our students moving forward. And so I would be remiss if I didn't start this presentation with acknowledging everyone here and people who couldn't make it tonight with all of their hard work and years and years of dedication, and finally kind of having it come to fruition. Craig talked a little bit about the heightened graduation requirements, and I'd like to really emphasize that as that segues into our next two parts of pathways. With an increased graduation requirement of 26 credits, there are very few openings in a school day for students. In four years, we offer eight periods a day, so eight times four is 32. If students need 26 credits, there are very few openings or non-instructional periods that they have available. So those students will fill their day with core requirements first, their 25 core requirements, 22 core requirements if we look at that slide. And the remaining three or four other related courses, pathway-related courses, they are going to choose with their families, their counselors, and their teachers in general areas of interest. So they would go through their four years, they would take their math, they would take their English, they would take their science, and each year, they would have a related course, something that they're interested in. It may be art one their first year, it may be a business class, it may be something else. And then the second year, they would take something else that they're interested in. Ideally, they've made that decision and taken a second course, and then a third course, and possibly even a fourth or a fifth culminating in that capstone experience. So those 25, 26 graduation requirements really are the backbone of our program of study. And the other options for students are sequences of courses that culminate in a real-life learning experience, which is our capstone. The capstone really started last year. We put together a committee across town of a number of staff. We met a series of times, starting in the winter, ending in the spring, using the state document, the state requirements, for components of a capstone, and looking at models of various places around the state. One Greenwich, one, University of Connecticut actually put out a study for a number of different schools. We sent one of our teachers to Berlin High School because they are marked as an exemplar for us. He actually went for their capstone night and brought it back for us. And we came up in those series of committee meetings with a proposal, and that's what you see before us. We met with the chief academic officer before he left for the other district, and he gave it his blessing as far as, please propose this in this current program of study, and that's what we are tonight. We have five required components of a capstone. And one is a proposal, one is ongoing research, ongoing reflection, another is research. They have to, ultimately, students have to have a product, and they have to culminate their experience in an exhibition or presentation. How that looks at Bryan McMahon High School, how that looks at Norwalk High School, that's up to the different schools and what that's going to look like within their advisory program, their house program, or within their classes, and we'll get to that in just a second. And how can we use courses and the curriculum that currently exists to really allow students, enable students to complete a capstone experience? And there's a general overview in ninth and 10th grades exploratory years, then they get into an 11th grade where they're really going to decide something. And most students will actually complete their capstone experience in senior year. Some accelerated may finish theirs in 11th grade. Sure?
They will each have an advisor, or one?
Every student at both high schools has an advisor. At Norwalk High School, we call it advisory. Once every week, we meet with a small group of students, meets with their advisor, advisory teacher, and assigns staff member, and works through a series of lessons. And so we're looking and exploring ways to utilize some of our current structures to support what we're doing within the capstone.
But the advisors, for the ability to read, may not have the expertise to work with these students, 12th grade, and maybe believe something fascinating, strong, or whatever. What happens? What do you want to do? We probably have a number of advanced students. That's a nice problem to have, but how will we handle it?
So it's interesting that you bring that up. In a couple slides, we're actually going to get through some of our pathways that everybody put together, which is, no, it's okay, which is a sequence of courses that the skills actually build upon one another and in their culminating class, and that's why these content experts have identified the courses that really will enable students to complete that capstone with a meaningful person and a knowledgeable person with them. And before we move too forward, I know it's not in the hard copy, but I have a link of a project explorer. Norwalk High School, almost a decade, has put together an independent study project for seniors, and it has enabled students to put forth their own ideas and get credit for an independent study as monitored by a certified teacher, and at the end of the year, present it in an exhibition. It was our version of a capstone experience. We have anywhere from 30 to 40 students each year at Norwalk High School to do it, that complete that project. Last year, we had a senior, Grace Bradley, who completed her project Explorer. And I want to show you just 30 seconds, just 30 seconds, of a video from her Project Explorer last year. What you're going to see, and I know sometimes the sound is difficult, so I'll just give you an idea. She's in this room, you'll see students sitting here, just like you're sitting, and she presents her year-long project where she created Unified Basketball. She worked with her peers, she organized, working with our best buddies and our special education department. She organized a Unified Basketball team, which was competitive with other surrounding towns. And I want to show you what a capstone experience could look like, that number five, that exhibition, what that would look like for our students. So Peter, could you just push play for a second?
Thank you.
Can you maximize that? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Grace T. and my project is U-High School. And you have, of course, a team here at R. High, and you play basketball, which are very high in grade 4 and 5. So I believe you can teach students, and you play against other schools in the S. class. For example, during a state experiment, all of them have teams, and they are going to play against, play against their school and play tournaments. And our first tournament was yesterday, actually, in the state.
Thank you, Peter. That's enough.
We got to go, and we got some help.
I actually spoke to Grace yesterday on the phone. Her brother still is a student here, so I was able to get her, make sure I had permission to show that video. But she, she put together a year-long project of Unified Sports and presented it and followed all of our core requirements, and we are hopeful that that will be a legacy project that we'll be able to continue year after year. That's an example of what a capstone experience could be for one of our students, not just a term paper or research or something they're written. It could be, but that's just one example, and it's what students are comfortable with, what they want to do to show their learning. At this point, one of our requirements that we're looking to transition is from our computer literacy requirement to more of a digital literacy requirement. I've asked Ralph to come up and speak to that.
Good evening, everybody. I'm just going to take a moment to kind of explain the shift. So in the past, we've all known that we've had a computer literacy requirement, which meant that you were comfortable, you can show proof that you understood how to use a computer. As we move forward in really the 21st century, this requirement needs to change. Your understanding of a computer isn't as important as an understanding of technology. If you guys have seen recently, there's a new Apple commercial out for the iPad, and at the end of the commercial, you kind of see a student, a kid that's just wandering around with an iPad, and finally at the end, somebody mentions to them, you know, what are you doing on your computer? And the kid says, what's a computer? So that's where we're moving to. So we really need to make sure students are digitally literate, not necessarily literate on a computer. That change is, if you really want to compare this to the way that we teach, we have performance tasks in a lot of our different curriculum areas. Students need to be able to be digitally literate to be able to perform a task using technology. So they need to have those 21st-century learning skills in order to do this. So that is being able to be a critical thinker, being able to collaborate, being able to communicate. That's what we're looking for. So the courses now that meet that digital literacy requirement are courses that show that competency for students. So it's not just having, there are no more keyboarding courses anymore to be able to learn keyboarding. What we've moved to is you've got to be able to apply the knowledge that you have. So in the case of Kyle Seberg and the Digital Media Lab over here, the idea of being able to use Adobe Premiere and present a project using a piece of software and get their message across is what we want to be able to see. And you can see that in a music classroom, you could see that in a business classroom, anywhere else. But there are certain core components that have to be there that you understand how to use a piece of technology. So that's actually been integrated, and those are now our digital literacy requirements. So that's a shift that we're making with, from computer literacy to digital literacy.
Part of what we're also doing on that slide is we have a new Common Sense Media platform that we're piloting at Brookside and Cranberry and Rowayton, and actually Ralph and I will be meeting on Thursday to figure out how we're going to distribute it across all 20 schools next year. So there are eight content modules. Ralph has a handout that he's going to give you on the eight modules, and it really talks about privacy, safety, cyberbullying. These are the things we're going to address throughout the district, but not necessarily in a computer class. That might be something we can drop into social studies or drop into ELA. It doesn't have to be just through digital literacy, but it's a very good curriculum that we're piloting right now in our public schools.
And I'll pass it out in case anybody wants to hear it.
Is this, Ralph, kind of what Michelle Casey initiated?
Yes, so we, yeah, I didn't, I knew the focus tonight was on high school, but we've actually started this process in grades three through five. All grades three through five, teachers will have a digital citizenship curriculum in place, which understands the components of being online, knowing what your footprint is and so forth. That's happening in grades three through five. We're actually piloting also in grades six to eight. I've got a number of teachers doing that as well, and we'll be working on it over the summer to make sure that that's actually integrated into the high school curriculum. So it's a series of 15 lessons I have in here later on, if anyone wants to see it.
Great, thank you.
Before we move on, I just want to highlight that on the bottom of each of the slides is the page located that if you'd like to refer to the program itself and look at and read through what either me or someone else is speaking to, that's why it's there, just so you're aware. This next slide, and this is a shift in our presentation to really where we're going and what the change, the significant change in Norwalk Public Schools, specifically in the high school, this is really where we're going and what we've done in this program of study. Choices, and choices within school programs. Academies and pathways currently now exist in both high schools and within an alternate setting in Norwalk schools. Now, these, the vision of the superintendent and our Strategic Operating Plan, will open up schools for students and families to choose which school they attend based on their interest and based on the program at that particular school. And that's what we have started, and the work is not done, but that's what we are taking great strides in over the last few years. Just some of the symbols as we move forward. We have a global studies, which is really an inter-district magnet. It follows, and I'm going to define what an academy is versus a pathway in just a minute. An inter-district, it is our inter-district magnet school, however, it does follow the definition of our academy. So Julie's here, and I'm sure she can field some questions later about it. And I know we've recognized it as a school all to itself, as now we're collecting data and reporting out on it. However, it does fulfill that definition. So we are, it's for our purposes of our presentation and purposes of our organization, we will count it as such. We have our medical academy, which Tom Suits has really pioneered, which we'll get into a little bit later. We have NECA, which Ms. Amaker has taken on now for four years, and as you know, has really set the standard for not only the state of Connecticut, the nation, and I'm going to embarrass her right now, but she's flying out in the morning to present nationally because, I know, well, you had in the morning. She was scheduled to fly out in the morning to present nationally because the model that we have here at Norwalk High School and Norwalk Public Schools, everyone wants to see what we're doing here. We now at Norwalk High School have the Digital Media and Communication Academy, which we'll get to in just a second. And we also have our alternative and credit recovery setting, which is our Norwalk Pathways Academy. Now, the definition of an academy versus a pathway is really what we work towards. The academy is a smaller learning community or program within a school. And the idea is that an academy is larger, and it has multiple pathways or sequences within it. So NECA has three different majors or pathways that Ms. Amaker and her students are working towards with not only NCC, but IBM. There's an industry partner. And not an industry partner that we collaborate with, but an industry partner that drives our decisions. IBM requires workplace learning. They require certain pieces because of their industry partnership. That's what happens within an academy. As Tom Suits and the McMahon Healthcare Academy is growing, they're working closely with Norwalk Hospital. And there, Norwalk Hospital is allowing our students to have field experiences there. They're collaborating with NCC and having those students take dual enrollment courses, as well as Project Lead the Way courses, for them to not only be challenged on a college level, but rigorous, a rigorous sequence of courses within high school. There is a cohort of teachers, and finally, there are, should be, and sometimes we work towards, an advisory group with various stakeholders. The next slide is, I'm going to focus on newly, really our newly-developed academies. The McMahon Healthcare Academy, as I just described, has three pathways to certifications. We have our Certified Nursing Assistant, CNA, Emergency Medical Technician, or EMT, and Electrocardiogram Technician, or CET. So our students from Bryan McMahon will have the opportunity to earn certifications in working through that. You might notice a typo on the hard copy that I caught after I went to print. It says can, and our students can. Well, I caught it before I went up on the board at CNA. So our students, through a sequence of courses, our Project Lead the Way courses, and ultimately a partnership with NCC, then has field experience and leads with certification, and that's a goal of our academy and one of three areas. That goes for the same with Digital Media and Communications Academy. Our partnership is with CPTV. We are working closely, and we are working with them and asking them to drive some of our decision-making around curriculum. What is the industry standard? Are your professionals going to come here into our school and collaborate with our teachers and work hand-in-hand with our students to put forth a product, to give them real-world experience and career-related skills? Maybe you saw our innovation, what we like to call our Innovation Center down the hall. Right here is what we're doing because right now, we don't, we currently don't have an offsite. We're exploring other areas within the building to expand some of those opportunities for our students within our Digital Media and Communications Academy. And we are also moving forward with our partnership with NCC in those five areas. Those five areas are what NCC offers for certification dual enrollment, and that's what we're pursuing.
I'm sorry, just because I'm new, the partnerships with NCC beyond NECA, do we pay them for the college, like how does that work when we partner with NCC?
Well, over the course of this year, I think Ralph has really taken this on as far as his role within innovations, technology, and partnerships. And we started, and many people in this room were actually there, we started in a meeting at NCC with a number of community partners, a number of people at NCC with a number of community partners, a number of people from NCC and from Norwalk Public Schools. And there's a dean who works at NCC who is really looking to expand their partnership. And so what we currently have at NECA, and Ms. Amaker can jump in at any time, but what we currently have in NECA is our teachers who are in the building right now are teaching NCC courses using their syllabus. So Mr. Matthews, for example, is our English teacher in NECA. He's teaching EN101, English 101, semester one, and English 102, semester two. He is teaching our students in Norwalk High School, NCC courses for college credit.
So to clarify, they're providing the curriculum, but they've already developed what we're not getting, their teachers, we're not using their space. It's the curriculum.
And that's what we're, and that's what we're exploring.
Yeah, I think it depends on the program, really. You have to kind of look at each program as customized, whether we're at NCC or whether we're here. But we are moving forward. A good example is right now as we build up the culinary pathway, both Maggie, that you mentioned, Ted, are, we're working currently with NCC to have them as adjunct professors so that then we can actually offer dual credit from here as they're taking those courses. So we're in the process of that. So it depends on the program, on how it's actually funded. You can probably go through each one in specific.
I was going to say, and I think it probably looks a little bit different with the medical, with the healthcare academy as well. Each, I think each one has its own little piece in unique way, way it works out. And now the difference, oh, sure.
I did want to jump in on the Digital Media and Communications Academy. I know we had a really fantastic presentation a couple of months back and it was very exciting to see where you were moving. I did hear you mention there's no off-site location. That was something that we had a great deal of discussion on. So what happened?
So the CPTV was cut by the state. They had been anticipating $3 million grant. The grant has been cut to $1 million.
It's probably about 1.2 million or so. So the issue is that they haven't the location where they were going to be going to.
The Wall Street location.
The Wall Street location. They're still locally looking for more space now. So our partnership has continued as it is. They've got their staff working with our staff on program development. We still have opportunities for job shadowing. They've actually built a small loft studio here for the for-profit in the Sonoma area. So they do, they are located right now in South Norwalk. They're going to still, like I said, I think Jerry's still really trying to figure out exactly where he can place a studio in this area. He's also tried with, to be honest, with the 1.2 million dollars, the idea of using it at Wall Street, I think it's, there's a stipulation that it may have to be a non-municipal location to be able to use that funding. So they may, they, that you can try and figure out exactly. They may not be co-located with that 1.2 million here or at NCC. Those decisions are still trying to be worked out. But the partnership's there, there's a commitment from NCC, from CPTV to have a co-located area here in the South Norwalk, in the Norwalk area. And they know they need it as a business model as well.
And follow-up to that, so is it likely that this is going to prevent an actual off-site location from happening in the coming school year when this was going to be launched?
Yes, for the next school year.
Okay. And with that being a yes, are we going to see any potential hindrance in the offerings or the effectiveness in the program? Because I did feel that a part of that presentation was, did strongly focus on that off-site location.
See, the off-site location would have been with a full-fledged studio. So right now we have a media studio, so that's really where the, where the gap is. It's, as the program's being built out, I mean, it's only in its first year, it's going to take a few years to get into that point where that will be completely necessary on a full-time basis in a sense. The work though that we're doing with CPTV, with producers, engineers, staff there for curriculum writing, those components are still moving forward as planned.
Okay, so just to then clarify, no effect is going to happen to this program in it going forward as currently?
I think will affect the numbers of students in the long-term.
Okay. So the enrollment will be lower. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Varnes, could I just add a comment? I've seen the space that we have and it's phenomenal. I want to give a shout out to Mr. Seberg and Mr. Carl. They've worked phenomenal, really have worked really hard on getting this program launched and up to speed. I think we've got a great student outcome with this. I think our kids are engaged and are ready. And I know that we talked, as Mr. Aaron just mentioned, I know during our last presentation, we talked about busing the students over and logistically that wasn't going to work. So I think for now we have it here, we have the space, we have the setup, and I assume we're going to add on to it. I know, speaking to Mr. Seberg, we want to enhance what we have during this time.
Yeah, there will eventually be a need for a studio space where that will be able to kind of expand.
And I'm hoping at some point, in speaking to Mr. Carl, Mr. Seberg, having the whole board at some point visit, I don't know if we've all been able to have that opportunity, but it's a fantastic opportunity for our kids and it's a great location here, at least for now.
Eric, I just want to say despite the hiccup with CPTV, we're moving forward with Norwalk Community College. The program still leads the certification as a web developer and film and television. So full steam ahead on that part of the partnership.
Adobe Premiere certification.
And that was, that was a big piece of, I know the presentation, so I just wanted to ensure that the CPTV partnership and its actual off-site location wasn't going to hinder any of the certifications being offered. Thank you, Craig.
The next transition is into pathways. And this is really where a lot of the work has been done outside of the industry partner. It's how do we align our courses, our current offerings into sequences that make sense for our students and lead to a meaningful experience, as I described before, within the capstone. I think Mr. Kimmel asked that question and this is where we are. So a pathway is really a, is a minimum of three or more credits in a sequence that fall under a specific career cluster, a subject area, or a field of study. And the hard work that this group did is really looking at our current offerings and saying, okay, how can we align our, an introductory type course, a more of a concentration course where we are now applying the basic skills or tools that we've learned? And finally, in at least a third, if not a fourth or a fifth, a capstone-type course where within the curriculum currently exists a senior-type project that these students can work towards and work on within a classroom setting with a certified teacher in that area to make sure they're maximizing their talent and ability. And we did that with CTE, the CTE, the career clusters, career tech, the technology education within Connecticut. We looked at our career clusters and these are directly aligned to careers in a particular field. So whether it be a lawyer, whether it be a police officer, we didn't necessarily look at just a career because careers change. If you look at research and data, in the next, in the next 10 years, the current jobs won't exist, we'll have anywhere from a half, 50% to 75% new jobs, but the field itself will exist. Agriculture's not going away, technology's not going away. So we looked at those. And we developed sequence of, sequences of courses that led to an experience in a particular pathway. And some are more robust than others and some allow students to then start dual enrollment with NCC, as you'll see within the book. Some are starting partnerships with industry, exploring those. We're not quite there in all areas, so over the next two to three years, I look forward and you'll see that in the next steps slide at the end, really taking a step back, making it even more interdisciplinary and reaching out to have more and establish more partnerships around industry and allow dual enrollment. First, first if we look at Brian McMahon. IB and in working with Brian McMahon, students and staff and administration, IB has really touched every area. And that program, from my experience and not working at Brian McMahon, that has really raised the rigor across the board. High tide raises all ships. And that's every time we, I walked out of a meeting with every single content area here, I walked out and saying, oh my gosh, they have, at least at the end of every sequence, they have an IB course if they don't have an AP course. They have a program that's rigorous, that's compared internationally. They're expanding their programs to a career-related program in the next couple of years. So they offer a number of areas that we'll get to in just a second. Right now, and I'm going to give a general statement, so I don't mean to misspeak, but I think they have about 300 students right now taking, plus or minus, taking IB courses and 28, if I'm not mistaken, in the diploma program? Give or take?
29.
29, okay, sorry. I thought it was 28. 29 in the diploma program. So we have, Brian McMahon has opened its doors in this particular pathway and that's really what it is, a program, a sequence of courses that they, which is very, very rigorous. They have extensive, a Project Lead the Way engineering and they're opening up to a computer science. They have a number of pathways within the arts, within music, within English, business, social studies, STEM, JROTC, and by literacy. A number of different pathways within each of those content areas. I want to highlight arts for just a second because it's important. We're judged as high schools, we have a report card, as you know, the accountability index. Point 12, I believe, is access to arts. We will not ever prevent students from taking arts classes, whether that be music, performing arts, whether that be art, as you know, because we want to have as many students as we possibly can take those. So although we're developing, and is what you're going to see in a second on Norwalk High, a performing arts and music pathway, they still exist and they will always exist at Brian McMahon because we have to make sure that we have all of those, we have as many students in art courses, art-type courses as possible. For a full complete list, I know it's a very tiny slide, but I want, we wanted to make sure it's all up there, it's on page 45, the summary of all pathways.
Just to highlight, there are nearly 30 pathways at each school. We just can't fit them all in one slide. In your book, on page 45 is the detailed list and on page 24, you'll see the stems or clusters that lead to these 30 pathways. So Barbara, you have a question?
Yeah, I just, having had an unusual career myself, which formed, started forming in my interest in high school, I'm concerned, do we have a flexibility for a student who comes with multiple strengths to create their own program? So for instance, I ended up in arts administration. So I did a lot of work in music and I did a lot of work in business and I did my, essentially a capstone. I did two, I did one about Schoenberg and one about business analytics. So the question is, can we create hybrids with an advisor for a student like that who doesn't fall into a clear category?
It's an interesting question. I'm going to go back to my meeting with, at Brian McMahon actually, with the department chairs and Scott and some of the administrators. And I think that question was raised, that exact question, I think Scott, you raised it. And whereas, well, what about an interdisciplinary approach? And I think I'm going to start with, we worked really hard in this process about having our baseline, our introductory level courses be flexible for a number of different pathways. And we are letting the capstone really drive that experience and really that decision-making.
Yeah, I think, I think the answer is if it will lead to a capstone.
Right, so my question is, can a student in their sophomore year or freshman year, could there be a guideline or an application process for them to color outside the lines a little?
Yeah, so again, it has to lead to a capstone. So we have to kind of start with that. And so you say, okay, I've taken one course in a particular area. What I'm thinking about in terms of a capstone is X and it might require me to step out of this pathway to take another class in order to have the background of completing the capstone. So under those circumstances, yes, we can. But again, the concept here is that we are no longer going to have unrelated electives. We're going to have electives that relate to a capstone because every student, in order to meet our state graduation requirements, will have to be able to demonstrate real work and a solution to a real-life problem.
I'm looking at mentioning the arts stuff. I take a 41, 45, page 10, I'm just going to go there. I'm very bad with any of the variations. What is the A slash degree?
Audiovisual.
Audiovisual, that's what I thought. Okay, so I see, well, under all the arts, I see six with, all of this is audiovisual.
So those are followed the CTE, career clusters.
So it's, it comes under that set of clusters, the CTE.
Yes.
Okay, so a career as a payment, what exactly?
Arts, so that would be, so communication AV in arts. But it's not, so the state of Connecticut gave us, gave some guidance around.
So a career in music, okay, strings, there's a separate set of courses in strings. Okay, let's get, let's go back to a dancer. What would the, a person who is, who wants to pursue a career in dance, or let's say drama, what is, what would be the pathway or what are the offerings?
Well, actually, if, when we go to Norwalk High School, they've put together a series of courses that we're going to, the school and the department has put together a series of theater courses, Theater 1, 2, and 3 with this expanded offerings. That was something that, that Norwalk High School was trying to expand.
And would the student on the other side of town have a choice to go to the Norwalk High School pathway?
And this is where, this is where I started with school choice. So I worked closely with Dr. Costanzo's office and we're still in process of utilizing our current procedure with intra-district transfer and using what currently exists in an application process to go to the school outside of their attendance zone. So just, and we're, we're going to work closely with the schools and establish a deadline and a timeline that makes sense for an application. So just like a student who currently attends Norwalk High School, if they're interested in going to Brian McMahon for the reasons listed, they would apply intra-district transfer, they would complete that application, explain what and why, have their parent or guardian sign. That would then go to the principal at Brian McMahon and he would have to determine, knowing his resources, knowing what he has available for space, to make that determination whether it was.
That's where the problem is. So you have the kid going to Brian McMahon, a great painter, who wants to pursue it. Brian McMahon does not have facilities. There's no space in Norwalk High School. What happens?
Well, no, I think, I think that, so first of all, you know, you can, I think you can get the sense from looking at these, that these offerings are very rich and comprehensive. But no high school can offer everything, right? It's, there, first of all, there aren't enough students and secondly, there's enough money to ever do that and there's not enough space. And so the concept here is that certain schools would have certain signature programs and certain schools would have certain pathways. And one's choice of high school would be based upon your interest and need in pursuing a particular area that you're interested in as opposed to an attendance area. And that's why I think a lot of care has gone into trying to balance these so that there are a number of attractive things at each school that may not be offered at both. Now there are some pathways that are offered, offered at both simply because they're, they're, it's essential to do so. But I think this is sized probably a little in excess of the number of students that we have at this point.
One question. So at one point, do the students decide their pathway?
So Brian McMahon has done a really good job of having a freshman seminar class for the, for the last couple of years. They're, they really have developed a curriculum and enabled students, and that was really homegrown from the teachers in the school and exposed students to not only some of their school expectations, but the school-wide rubrics. And over the last, I'd say, few months, we really have looked at that course, making sure that we offer it here at Norwalk High next year to incoming freshmen to replicate some of what's happening at Bryan McMahon, and looking at the curriculum to, to incorporate the offerings at both schools, including surveys, interest surveys through Naviance that already exist, utilizing some of the, the resources that we have to make sure students and families are exploring what really they're interested in, so they can make some decisions with their counselors and with their teachers.
So when do they then need to make the decision, so that's the freshman seminar, to explore the options and start thinking about it, when do they make the definitive decision?
I don't want to use the word definitive, simply because, you know, there are, just like the question was raised before, there are different paths, and some students may choose one thing and, and figure out they, they want a different capstone and will have to take something else. But we are going to encourage them to embark on that introductory level course if they haven't in ninth grade, to make a decision in, in 10th grade, so they can take at least their intro, their concentration, and then culminate in their capstone.
Okay, because that precisely is, is my, my question and hesitation about all of this. I think about all of the students that go into university declaring a major and very quickly decide they want to change majors. And I think it makes sense to have all of the foundation, and you articulated it well, that the foundation courses would be applicable for all students, no matter what pathway they then choose. And someone could choose a pathway in high school and change, and have a completely different career path, just like many folks have majors that they never do anything with ever again. So I, I think that's just my concern, is that students understand that they have the option to have these pathways that may or may not lead to a career or further education. But if they do move forward in that career pathway, it could give them a huge leg up in the world, but it also doesn't destined their future, that they can't change and go into music if they were in the medical profession in their high school pathway.
Yeah, very good point. You know, I just want to point out that of the 25 credits required, 20 are foundational requirements.
Yep.
Okay, there's only five courses in the pathway. And the research on this, and the reason why the state is passing its, its requirements is that even if the student never pursues the pathway topic in college, the fact that they had to synthesize information and produce real work in response to a real-world problem actually increases their ability to complete college and do well in college. And, you know, the same, the same research has existed in magnet high schools in Connecticut. Students in magnet high schools have a much higher college-going rate than others. However, only 50% pursue the topic of the, of the, of the magnet.
There's a student at Norwalk High, the, I, I was, he's a senior this year, he's in the digital academy, Digital Media and Communications Academy, and he's, he's on the soccer team. So I was talking to him after one of the soccer games they lost in the state tournament, pulled him aside, I said, you know, tough break, and so on and so forth, they had a great run. And I said, so how's it going downstairs? He's like, oh, it's great. I said, oh, what are you working on? He showed me a poster he's working on, he's doing his projects, got Adobe, working on certification, Adobe certification. I said, oh my God, it's incredible, great job. So is this something that you want to do in the future? Oh, absolutely not. I said, okay, no? He's like, oh, no, it's a great class, I love Mr. Carl, I love Mr. Seberg, I'm learning so much that I'm going to be able to apply, but I definitely don't want to do that. I said, oh, and I walked away with that same sentiment, saying, oh, wow, he's applying real-world skills, he's learning technology, 21st century skills, all the things that we want out of kids before they leave our walls, and yet he has decided, I'm not doing that, but I'm going to do something else and use all that I built, I'm sorry.
No, not at all. So I just want to make sure that I am not inferring something. It seems like you were saying that in the freshman seminar that, or I'll just ask, efforts are being made to expose students to things that they might not necessarily even know they would have an interest in, like to show them the palette of what's available, is that the case?
Yes, that's, and that's the charge for next year. I know we've had extensive conversations during this program of studies process in making sure that that exists within the curriculum for next year at both schools. And we will look back to what currently is, and I know our school-wide rubrics and some of the ex, school-wide expectations were really driving the process, but now we really want to make sure we incorporate explorer, making an exploratory experience, and really incorporate parents. And I know that Bryan McMahon has really done a good job, even student-led, student-led conferences, which was the culmination, which was kind of like a mini capstone, and that's where they, that was the drive.
Okay.
You're, both of these questions, though, beg the issue of, you know, what do we do in eighth grade? Should we, in eighth grade, be exposing students to all the choices that they will have available in the high school relative to their choice of high school? I don't think we have a perfect answer for that yet. This will be a developmental process. I think we're going to start, you know, as Adam said, with the freshman seminars. There are some parents who will know, based upon the existence of an academy, where they want to go, whether it's NECA or IB. But when we get down to the level of the specific pathways, that's probably going to require some type of an orientation to eighth graders and their families. And I think that's a future, that's a future goal for us.
I think to your point, we had an academic night the other night, and it was really kind of like a focus group. We put some of this information out, we invited some of the eighth-grade parents and students from our sending schools. I know Bryan McMahon already had theirs earlier in the month, so we had ours on the 27th. And we showed information, we answered questions, we got some, some of their feedback, and many came up after the presentation, already having applied to one of our academies or, or Bryan McMahon's. And others had questions about, all right, after ninth grade, when and how. And I think, to Dr. Adamowski's point, this will occur over time, and once we more fully develop our pathways and academies and, and our industry partnerships, I think it'll push down, push down into our middle schools, and we will be able to work hand-in-hand, more of a vertical articulation as well.
I would think it's, you know, parents that are hearing from other families, parents that are hearing from other families, the great programs, the rigor that we have in a lot of these pathway academies that we're offering, and I think siblings will probably be interested as well, so I think it's just getting that word out and what we have to offer.
And if I could just also, I'm sorry, Adam, I, I do have a mother who I know, whose son is an eighth grader going into McMahon next year, and he just attended, well, they attended the orientation, so to speak, of IB, and even though she was having a coronary about the amount of homework those children were talking about, he was thrilled. So I think that, you know, that is a good model, because even though the parent's like, good God, I could never do that, I'm so happy for you, child, he, he apparently saw something there from the students that were presenting. And also, the fact that I did hear that there were student presenters in that, talking about their experience in the IB program, was hugely impressive to me, because I think peer talking to peer is going to be so much more beneficial than, no offense any of the teachers and administrators in the room, but frankly, kids aren't going to listen to you. They're going to listen to their peers before they're going to listen to you. So I think that that was brilliant, and I think that that is, we continue to develop these pathway, and how we're developing them, the kids that are taking them, the kids that have that experience and that are passionate about it are going to be the best salesmen and the best explainers of what the kids are looking forward to.
That, I think that's a great point, and I think it exists in pockets now, as you just described IB, and I know NECA does it as well, and some of the other programs have, has, have kind of dabbled in that, depending on when and where. As we continue to grow, we'll have to create a model and a, and a standard for how, whether it be, you know, to our sending schools and vice versa, and a timeline. I think that's a great idea. Just before I hand over for biliteracy pathways, I want to highlight just the Norwalk High School academies and pathways as well. And it's almost identical, the number that are offered, it may look a little different on the actual number on the bottom, but that's simply because some pathways exist within others. So you'll notice a music and performing arts pathway, we're, we're hopeful to expand that partnership, just like we described with hospit, with our hospitality and management pathway, to do the same within a performing arts at Norwalk High School. Within our environmental science, a project lead the way in, in engineering, Norwalk High School isn't quite as robust as, as Bryan McMahon as far as project lead the way. We have our engineering pathway, and STEM is wonderful, and STEM is one of our new graduation requirements. But, but Norwalk High School has offered an environmental and a public health and safety to kind of give multiple areas. There's also multiple pathways in arts, business, science, health, STEM, social studies, JROTC. And the difference between the two schools, if you're unfamiliar, the Norwalk High School offers the Air Force, AFJROTC, and Norwalk High School is Navy and JROTC, so it is a little bit unique.
Wait, which one's which?
Air Force, Norwalk High.
And McMahon is.
Navy.
Okay.
So you, the policy committee met in the Air Force room, if you saw that. It was great, fantastic.
On, on this page here, Adam, what, what is water safety?
Water safety is, we have a pool at Norwalk High School, and so we, water safety instructor, it's actually a certification, WSI, water safety instructor. So students would culminate their experience with a certification, just like a lifeguard, a Red Cross, water safety instructor.
So this obviously is, needs the pool.
Correct.
In order to have that pathway.
Yes.
Just clarifying.
That one's probably going to be at Norwalk High only.
Huh?
That'll be at Norwalk High School only.
Yeah, I, I would assume so, yes. And, and also given the fact that the pool is currently only in existence at Norwalk High School, I figured that this pathway would only be offered here, so.
And that actually, that was a huge undertaking by Doug Marquetti, who's our athletic director, he teaches the swim, our aquatic fundamentals classes, and we're really developing a, a more robust pathway within the aquatics.
I just want to make a quick comment, I see many of you are looking at the PowerPoint. These pathways are real, and they exist. If you go to page 24 in the actual program of studies, you will see class by class, every single pathway that's needed, or every single course that's needed to complete that pathway. So page 24 for Bryan McMahon, and page 34 for Norwalk High. This is the extent of what we can fit on a slide, but these are detailed pathways listing every single course, including partnerships with community colleges, Norwalk Hospital, et cetera, that you need to complete the pathway. It's not just a list on a piece of paper.
So for my experience here as a graduate of Norwalk High School, obviously, I had my electives that I could take, that were, in addition to my core studies, graduate of 2002. So vast world of difference from what I had compared to what is in this book here. So the way I'm seeing almost some of these pathways, it's taking the place of the elective, giving a focus of studies that was much more robust than mine.
I'd like to just use Dr. Adamowski's words for a second, is shopping mall versus, versus related courses. And if you'll see throughout that book, people worked really hard, a lot of people in this room worked really hard at identifying what graduation requirement it would fit, but really under the related courses. We tried to relate things together, and not to lock any student into an experience, but to relate them to build upon one another.
Well, yeah, and that's what I see in here as well, to some of the questions that my fellow board members had earlier, there are similarities that, let's say, in the ninth grade, beginning of a pathway, if they saw something and they were interested in that, they may actually experience something that they appreciate much more in that pathway that is much deeper explored in another pathway. So I like the flexibility that I'm seeing, this is, you know, Craig and I actually had a brief conversation of this a few nights back, and I am really impressed to see this fleshed out. I, I kind of want to go back to ninth grade in some sick way. I'm going to think about that and come back later, but this is, this is very exciting stuff, because, I mean, starting in ninth grade electives, there was nothing like this for me. And hearing some of the students that I, I know that have more recently graduated, that have started to get touches of this, and now really seeing what our students will experience in the high schools is, it's exciting, and it's no wonder we're being recognized the way we are.
I have a question. Do you have a sense of percentages between the pathways at Bryan McMahon and the pathways at Norwalk High? If the percentages have some level of parity in terms of which are dedicated to be college-ready versus career-ready?
I can't quote data, but we worked as a group and, and then took a step back afterward, and really tried to align the offerings to be of equal value. Career, I, I don't think we confuse, we don't really use those, we use those two interchangeably.
Yeah.
Career, college and career, and we're really driven by career-ready skills. And even our AP courses, which technically give us college-level credit or NC courses, they're really, the, the curriculum is driven by career. So we try to use those interchangeably, and we really tried as hard as we could to balance the two offerings, even to the number, really, that we offer. And if you count, if you count them up, there's, there's about 30 in each. And although it says on the summary at 25, it's really because some are embedded within a more robust pathway. We tried to balance.
The pathways themselves are geared to career. The foundation courses are foundation courses, they're just geared to, for college or career pathway, just, just so you get the education that you're required to have in 21st century. So when you say geared towards career, you're talking about the different pathways.
Yes, and when the, that slide where we tried to really break down a minimum of three credits. So that first introductory level course would be a basic tools, to really see what it is. Although it's always driven, we, we go from the, the backwards design model, so we start with career and drive backwards.
So if someone wants to be a surgeon, they want to be a doctor, medicine, they would be there, they would have to take a pathway.
They would start with biology.
They may have to take biology.
They do.
They take biology, so they got that.
Yep, and so they would.
This guy, this person wants to go to medical school, person likes science, okay, so they start with biology, right? So they'll take chemistry.
It's actually laid out, if we turn to page, yeah, it's, if you look at the medical, the McMahon Healthcare Academy, they actually have a four-year sequence.
So if, if someone in McMahon wants to be a doctor of medicine, they would be in the healthcare academy?
If they so chose, if they chose.
Would that be sufficient to provide them the background to go to a school and be pre-med?
So I don't, I don't, I think they, what, what we're exposing students to, and I don't want to speak for Tom, because I think he's done a lot of the work.
Hi, Tom.
How are you doing?
Please, Tom.
All right. You all together? All right.
Although the voice carries.
Question, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to draw a little, if one must be asserted versus just an EMT or something like that, not that it's just an EMT, but if they're taken for science courses, yes, we're expecting a higher level of life, the honor bio, follow by an honors chemistry, because with NTSAS, we have to align.
What is that?
Uh, next-gen science standards, and that's going to be our, our new assessment state national. So the core courses are going to be the bio, the chem, and then for that type of child, the physics. And that's going to be the wild card on that. But the one word, and, and I'm sure we all have heard it before, the one word that's been missing tonight, which is huge about all this, is student engagement. But this is all about student engagement, and there's tons of studies and research, and, and we've seen that, because a kid who's in a medical class at the same time as a biology class is getting better scores in biology because of that engagement of that. So these kids work through it. My own son, who's a sophomore, his roommate's pre-med, his roommate had to go last summer and become an EMT, because that was a street rep for his next level. So by joining, doing a medical academy, that is preparing him for it. And so when we talk about percentages, we're asking percentages of career versus college, it doesn't matter, because that kid can literally walk out and get a job right now in Norwalk Hospital. There's three positions in Stanford right now we're looking at, putting our kids, we have kids right now being certified as EMTs. They can walk out right now, get a job with benefits, and pay for college that way. Or they can go right to college and apply that knowledge, because that level of engagement is there.
And what do, let's, let me switch here. So, so you have the eighth grader who knew all the algebra there was to do, the algebra table, he's done it over with algebra one by the time he or she reaches high school. And the person loves math, they want to, they love math, that's an end in itself. Career, you're dealing with 14-year-olds, they'd rather talk about the math than other things, but not a career. So what is provided to the child, the student, to keep the child in our school system, who wants to take all the math that can, in the world? What do we have, what kind of sequence?
And that's, and that's where with that pathway, you could go strictly with a math-based pathway. We call and understand, extend is an overused term, science, technology, engineering, math. You have that pathway, but also as part of other pathways, let's be honest, math is a gatekeeper for a lot of things. So there's components, I have a math teacher on my team who teaches for the academy for that purpose. So you have that connection, and what you, as we develop these and, and continue with on both schools, you're going to have co-work these kids, where if you're in the medical academy, if you're in the digital media academy, when you're in your core class, the problems you're working on are around that concept, around that topic. So if you're doing a math problem, keep them engaged for that.
So the, the parents want to know, child, will the child be able to take calculus before senior year? What do you have behind calculus?
Really quickly, I did notice that in both of the schools, there is a STEM math pathway, so is that built out more, Craig, in, in here, and we could see all those course offerings?
Every single course is listed.
So to, to Mr. Kimmel's point, there would, it would show the, in that pathway, what is offered, I, I can't find it right now, it's brilliant, I want to look through it, but can't point at it.
To your point, to your point, there are STEM pathways, math-related, math-specific at both schools, and so a student could take not only the three, but build out two, AP statistics, AP calculus, AB, BC, all, all of the RAP, computer science, if they're so inclined, all of those things within those pathways and build out.
Can I just interject? So what we're also talking about, and I love the passion in the room, I love when everybody kind of sits up and is ready to talk, but you're really talking about the academics, the engagement with peers, right, and teachers and staff, and then making those, having those students be career-ready. So it's academics, engagement, career-ready.
It's really college and career-ready. Not every pathway leads to a job or a certification. Some are pure math, like Bruce said, that lead to a capstone project and better preparation for college.
In terms of the presentation, if I may, the focus has been on the word career, career-ready. I think it's got to be a more balanced presentation, college and career-ready. I think it's got to be a more balanced presentation, college and career-ready.
It, it, it has been.
So I just, I just want to point out that we have a measure for this on the SAT. The college board has set a threshold of SAT scores. You meet the threshold, you're college and career-ready. It is the same for college, it is the same for career. It's the same threshold on, on the SAT. So these are synonymous, right? I think we're misapplying the career term to, as career technical.
Yes.
It's not career technical. It's academic career. You have to be at a certain academic level to be successful in whatever your college major would be.
And to Mr. Kimmel's point, when he was talking about the, the ethereal child who wants to become the surgeon and knows that as a ninth grader, I think that also there's the, the ability, and I think it would be something really good for us to look at as our guidance counselors, if they, we identify a child like that, we clearly do not have a pathway that is going to give them a scalpel, aside from maybe a pig fetus. But to that point, that guidance counselor could look at what pre-med is going to look like and what we could start building them towards, correct?
Correct. So just to answer that question directly, that student could have a pathway in mathematics, psychology, biotechnology, marine biology.
Yes.
Those are all clearly articulated.
And absolutely, and I see those in there, but I think specifically, and, and again, I think, I don't want to get too much into the weeds on it myself, but I think that I have a great deal of faith that, you know, there are some really fantastic career pathways. And to Tom's point, or somebody's point, on this EMTs being a prerequisite of pre-med, I think that is a brilliant way to look at it. And I think also as, as the student gets further and further along and gets ready to either move into a college environment or a career environment, that is going to be a key place for our guidance counselors, advisors, and whomever else is going to be a part of this process to help guide the child.
So to your point, we've started having, we had multiple sessions for professional learning for counselors around how to talk to parents and families, students, and counsel into making decisions meaningfully, both college and career, a more robust academic experience over the course of their four years.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Janine.
Hi. So if you look on page 43 of your program, we're going to shift gears a little bit and take a look at something that is very new to Norwalk Public Schools. So earlier in the year...
In the...
In the program of studies, page 43. Earlier in the year, the state of Connecticut has, has provided each school district with an opportunity to award students what we call the Connecticut State Seal of Bilitracy. This we can actually start in middle school, and we've already been having lots of conversations with middle school teachers, principals, and guidance counselors. So this we feel is very, very important, very beneficial, will give kids an edge when they go to college or when they go into their career, right? This slide speaks to the eligibility requirements. So in order for students to receive what we consider that seal of bilitracy, as well as what will be noted on their transcript, they need to do two things. First, they need to complete their ELA core requirements, and then they also need to demonstrate their proficiency in another language, their bilitracy in a language other than English, okay? And we do that through a couple of different ways. So if you look here at the chart, some of our students are already enrolled in IB programs, so they will be taking probably the world language exam. Some students are already slated to take the AP exam. For those students that do not take those exams, we have other opportunities that they can demonstrate their bilitracy. The first would be called the APEL for short, the Assessment of Performance Towards Proficiency in Languages, or if they are taking Latin, the Latin interpretive reading assessment, and we are going to offer those to students in April, okay? So for students who take IB or AP, those scores do not come in until after graduation. We will actually send home a seal through the mail so that they can affix that to their, their diploma, okay? So that is one way that they can achieve that pathway.
Janine, one quick question. So does Norwalk provide funds for AP exams so that, or is that an expectation that families are paying for those funds? So for something like the seal of bilitracy, and I'm thinking about families that may not have that discretionary funds to do that, does Norwalk have funds available for that or financial assistance of some sort?
Exactly. So for the seal of bilitracy, we're using a variety of funding sources through our ELL department, through the IB program, we are using through our Department of Testing and Accountability, so we have pooled funds. These tests are not, the two that, that I just mentioned are not very costly, they're about $20 a piece.
That's better than like an AP exam.
It is, it is. And then in terms of AP, students are required to pay for that, right? But we do have funding sources for that as well.
Okay, thank you.
If there is a hardship.
Free workers.
Free workers, that's right.
Janine?
Yes.
I'm sorry. If someone chooses a bilitracy pathway, does that preclude them from taking science? I mean, does this become your elective? Okay, sorry, I think I misunderstood.
And we're going to talk about some of the requirements later on in the presentation. When we look at humanities, going to mention, we're going to mention a couple of new items to our catalog here. So in terms of English Language Arts, we are opening up a new additional AP opportunity for our grade 12 students because historically we've only offered 11th grade AP Language and grade 12 AP Literature. So now we are going to afford our seniors the opportunity to also take AP Language. We also have some new related courses. This is very exciting. This has been about two years in the making with Brian McMahon and with Norwalk High School. There are related pathway courses in grade 12 in the area of ELA to appeal to students' interests. This came, this grew from a discussion that we had with teachers, interests that they had, things that they wanted to also bring to the course, to the courses that students take, as well as what our students were interested in. So for example, we have some students that may want to take sports literature or public speaking courses at Brian McMahon, and then we also have rockers, rebels, and revolutionaries that talk about the 1960s and that culture and science fiction at Norwalk High School. Very exciting, yes. Another addition we have, if you look there, it's Literacy Workshop, Writers Workshop and Interventions. We want to make sure that we are expanding to our grade 10 students opportunities in order to enter into some of those interventions as well. In Social Studies, you'll notice in your program of studies, we have added two new courses that we want to speak about. Social Justice will be offered over at Norwalk High School, and there is a course on genocide that will be offered at Brian McMahon, okay?
So I just, I just wanted to comment on that because several board members have expressed interest in Holocaust studies. In fact, there is a piece of legislation pending on this. If you look at page 56, you'll see the genocide class. We'll explore the Armenian genocide, the Holocaust, the auto genocide in Cambodia, the Rwanda genocide, and origins of the Irish potato famine, so we hope to cover it there. And then if you look at the next page, on page 57, this is the social justice class, and right up on the top, and you'll, you'll see that this, you know, these are human rights issues as expressed in various movements, the civil rights movement, LGBTQ, women's suffrage, and so on. And so again, these are, these are courses that a student may choose as part of a, of a pathway, but again, both of these, we've had expressions related from, from board members.
And the arts and music, performing arts, I'm not going to spend a lot more time on that, I think that's been addressed, but there are multiple ways for students to lead to a path, a capstone experience there. And then world languages as well, the bilitracy pathway that I spoke about, and then that increased graduation requirement. So currently, we have two credits that are required. We are going to require three credits now in world languages, and we can actually start talking, like I said, at the middle school level to see about getting students credit at that middle school level, and so that is next.
Isn't that the goal, Janine, that if you took a form like this in middle school, that would qualify for year one, the three years?
That is the goal. That is the goal.
I thought you were talking about background policy.
Yes, that is the goal. Okay.
One question, Janine, if I could just jump in. It goes to the, the different pathways. So for instance, there's some governmental pathways and international relations, and then you have the pathways in languages. Would a student be able to potentially take on both of those course loads?
Can I talk to that?
Sure.
Of course.
Yeah, so we, we had a lot of those kind of conversations as, as teams in this process, and we wanted to make sure our first year, we really clearly articulated sequences, and we would, we were hopeful, and after this process, taking a step back and looking at more of an interdisciplinary approach, what other courses also fit the international relations and would be good models or good courses for students to take in that, in that vein.
Well, and specifically to Janine's point on the, the seal of bilitracy, if you have a bilitracy seal and you're moving towards a master's degree in a language per se, you are also potentially looking at a career in, why am I blanking on what they're called? They go to the UN?
Diplomacy.
No. Wait, there's too many words. It's when you're, the translators, and diplomacy, and all of that. So I think that, you know, I think we're, we're touching on something that is extraordinarily relevant while already capturing some great pathways as far as career and college readiness, because I think that, as you said, there are some of these things that you could take and then jump right into a career if you wanted to while you're paying for, for their college courses, or set yourself up to going to a four-year or two-year school where you're going to be able to focus even further in and not waste that freshman year on God only knows how many dollars from mom and dad and the government and everything else. So again, I'm just excited, just wanted to express that.
Yeah, and this will definitely put kids in a better position once they get to college, freshman year, that they can start at a much higher level, especially in terms of the languages.
I mean, this is, this, this shows it. It's fantastic.
My daughter wasted my money. I know.
Yes.
So before we leave the seal of bilitracy, just as a point of interest, it's amazing that in just the first few days, over 120 students have come forward at Brian McMahon alone, seeking the seal. I was just chibber-jabbing with Scott over it. So it's one of those things, you don't think you have a need, and all of a sudden, the state allows you to do it, and in two days, 120 students want to sit for the test. So it's a very positive addition to the program of studies. We're very happy to offer it. The next slide actually has...
Without ignoring, what, how many at Norwalk High School?
I don't think we have those numbers yet, but I, I would assume it would be equal or greater. Scott was the first to reach out and see what the interest was in bilitracy, and it was unbelievable, like three, four times more than...
They all heard students, they're going to apply 90, so they're interested in learning more, and I was encouraged, they want to destroy that.
Still, 90 is a fantastic number.
I don't want to derail everything, and this might be a question for another day, but I don't know if we have looked at opportunities to use, everyone's been talking about the mythical student who wants to do this, that, and the other, or is that this school where this is at the other school? Have we thought about using technology to, to support that?
Absolutely.
Oh, good.
Absolutely.
Okay, then that answers my question.
Okay, what's new in STEM? Three big things on the slides here.
That was great.
Mathematics, we are going to offer for the first time ever an AP Computer Science class to freshmen. We'll be one of the first districts in the state to do that. We're quite proud of that. It's essentially a coding class, but there are many, many benefits from coding, so we're really excited to be in the forefront of AP Computer Science. Science has had significant changes, the second bullet you see there, Biology and Chemistry. We are now requiring all freshmen to take Biology, which means that all sophomores will take Chemistry. And this has caused quite a bit of consternation behind the scenes because we have had to ramp up the mathematics program to keep up with this requirement because you need Algebra II for Chemistry. So we essentially need all of our students, or as many as we can, to take Algebra in eighth grade and then be able to take Geometry and Algebra II prior to enrolling in Chemistry. So we are on that path, we're happy to be able to offer that. We put into the capital budget a significant amount of money, I believe it's $107,000, to purchase the remaining Biology and Chemistry books so that the entire school district at both high schools can take Biology as a freshman and Chemistry as a sophomore. So that is a huge improvement for us. No more physical science and other science appreciation courses. Everyone takes Biology and Chemistry in Norwalk Public Schools, so we're really excited about that. We're also piling new NGSS curriculum next September. We'll start writing that in the spring and throughout the summer. That's a great benefit to the district. We know traditionally, recently, as of late, science has been our Achilles' heel on our accountability index, and we're going to rectify that problem this summer. In terms of computer science and business technology, Brian McMahon will be offering a Project Lead the Way certification for computer science, Norwalk High and Cisco. And this goes back to what Dr. Adamowski said originally about differentiating the two schools. So if you're into networking, you're going to go to Norwalk High. If you're going to pursue pure computer science, you're going to go to Brian McMahon High School.
And did you already, I wasn't quite clear, have we addressed the transportation issues with that? If somebody goes to a different high school out of district, they have to provide their own transportation, or are we waiving that to accommodate? What are we going to do about that?
Well, first of all, there's, there is much less transportation at the secondary level because it's a two-mile situation. We will have to address this issue, but I can tell you that currently at the elementary level, at the middle school level, if a parent chooses a school outside of their tenancy, they provide their own transportation. And, you know, I think we have to be very careful, at least in the current budget climate, that we not accelerate the non-instructional expense of transportation because it will include the instructional things we want.
So my, my only concern is that we are offering some kind of parity, you know, at each school so that, that transportation isn't, doesn't become a necessary step.
We don't live in paradise.
Yeah.
And yet.
Some of our other course offerings that we're excited about within the book, the revised graduation requirements have changed basic and what you're used to, gym or PE and health, and they've really, the state of Connecticut has separated that. We, students now need a credit of physical education and wellness and a credit of health and safety. And as a result, that's charged us with saying, all right, how are we going to do that for our students? And looking at some of our courses and identifying, are they wellness, are they safety? And how can we look at some of our curriculum and change what we're offering to make sure we fulfill that? One of the decisions that we made as schools is next year, and this is, this is more of logistics, but it will help with scheduling, we're no longer going to offer quarter-length courses, they will be semester-length courses. And so in the scheduling process, it will have less study halls simply because of the scheduling versus what, or versus what has happened in the past. It just lines up better like a puzzle. And that was our PE in our health classes historically, so I just think it was, it's important just to mention that.
Quarter, Sebastian?
So we, we, we work in quarters at the high school, quarter one, two, three, and four. So what we have currently is Health One would be only a quarter long. And so it's, and PE, each PE class would be a quarter. So next year, Health would be a whole semester, would be quarter one and quarter two, and they would line up. So instead of a student not being able to schedule another quarter-length class up against that Health class and have a study hall, we've eliminated that, that possibility, which will allow us to schedule more efficiently and effectively and to allow students to take more classes without a study hall and a break in there.
Okay, if I may, this, I had a discussion a couple weeks ago with somebody, we weren't clear on scheduling and how you fit in 20 versus 26 and things like that. I wanted to make some, I wasn't, believe it or not, I was not clear on this. So when I'm looking on the very beginning where it says English four credits, that's four, what I grew up saying is a four years of English.
Yes.
Four years, entire year, two semesters, one credit of English.
Correct.
Okay, same for Biology.
Correct.
Okay, same, okay, when I see Computer Literacy, .5, you need one, minimum, one term, one semester.
Correct.
Okay, now I get it.
So throughout the book, just so you know, on the right side next to each course tells you the number of credits. There's also, and we already spent some time with business, I did, I did want to highlight another dual enrollment opportunity. Both business departments at Norwalk, at Norwalk High School and Brian McMahon have partnered with University of Bridgeport to offer a dual enrollment, and we're pursuing that opportunity to have students take college, college-level classes within our high schools. Same idea as we described before with NCC, but we're trying to branch out. And as we described before, we spent some time with Family, Consumer Science, and Hospitality. They're working towards a certification and ROTC, ROTC at both schools, which I said before. Miss Gorvish would come on? May Ms. Gorvish would come on?
Excellent. Pages 103 and 104 in your program guide describes a full continuum of services. We looked at what was existing and also projected what our eighth to ninth grade transition would look like, and we filled out some of the offerings that were previously available. It's anticipated that 90% of our students with disabilities will participate in general education coursework, whether that be the general ed core coursework, IB, AP. We know that we have quite exceptional students that we are identifying every day. We also know that effective co-teaching and inclusion is more than just geography, and with that anticipation that 90% of our students will be participating in the co-teaching classes or the general education classes comes a dedication to professional development around effective co-teaching strategies. There are students on, and that is reflected on page 104, who will need one or more special education courses due to the significance of their disability, students with moderate to more severe disabilities. And that includes 40 students who are currently eligible for our 18 to 21-year-old programs. The slide on the handout has been organized from least restrictive to most intensive. The last two programs are for our students with more moderate to significant disabilities. Project Search is in development, and it was one of the new programs that was recently supported by the Special Ed Development Fund, and that provides a full community-based opportunity for students to develop career-ready entry-level employment opportunities, typically students who did not go on to employment but rather lifelong dependency. And we're very excited about that. And the therapeutic intervention program is taking a look at our current resources that are supported primarily by contractors, and again, supported through the Special Ed Development to develop staff and programs so that we can provide a full continuum of services for our students with emotional or mental health issues. The descriptions are on 103 and 104, and I thank you. Great job. I don't know if there are any questions?
Just really quickly, the partnerships that you mentioned with the career readiness skills, and I believe you gave a presentation on this, I can't remember which meeting it was, but...
It was before I was hired.
Oh, that's when it was!
Live retreat.
Ah, fantastic. I was like, I'm like, were you actually working for us then?
Technically, no.
Technically, no, but specifically the potential of opportunities to partner with the Medical Pathways Program, you know, I remember that specifically and seeing that potential come forward, if you could just touch on that.
Excellent. Ralph and I have been working with a transition subcommittee of community-based partnership agencies. Project Search in particular is usually done in a medical center, not because it's necessarily a pathway to a medical career, but because hospitals or large community-based organizations like medical centers have every opportunity for internships, whether it's in the retail store, in culinary, or in a medical tech experience leading to that. So in that, we have an opportunity to speak to our medical center, and that is currently in process, and the Aquarium has also indicated an interest in working with us in this collaborative, so it's going to happen.
That's exciting. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Helene Becker, who's going to talk a little bit about our ELL offerings.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
What you see on this slide is a summary of the course offerings for our English-language learners. If you look on pages 105 to 108 in the Program of Studies, you'll see the complete list of our robust offerings, which have grown through the years as our ELL population has grown through the years. So you'll see a combination of our ESL courses, such as ESL One, ESL Two, et cetera, and you'll also see our sheltered, ESL Sheltered courses. These courses use the regular subject curriculum. For example, ESL Bio will use the regular Biology curriculum, but they're taught by teachers who are trained in effective strategies for teaching our English-language learners. And sometimes we also have a Spanish or a Haitian Creole aide in the class for support. And students get credit depending on which subject it is, so they'll get a Biology credit for ESL Biology. What's new is the chart that you see in the slide and on page 105. So this explains the course sequence for our English-language learners very carefully and very detailed. Most of the classes have been offered before, but we do have three new offerings. Our ESL Literacy Workshop is for students who need an extra boost in their literacy skills in English, and we will pilot that next year at Norwalk High School. Our ESL Seminar Class is new, that was piloted this year, and it was very successful. It's similar to the freshman seminar class, but it's tailored for our English-language learners. And the third new course is our ESL Chemistry Class, and this will allow our students who are presently in ESL Bio, and we have a lot of sections in the two high schools, to take a rigorous course, another rigorous science lab course. So the ESL Chemistry will be accessible to them, and they'll be able to be successful in another science class. And I just want to point out that a student is never locked into the sequence. If they're capable of taking the general education version of a class, we always push them out into general ed, that's our goal. A student, for example, might be able to take a general education algebra class or even an honors algebra class with their mainstream peers, but they might still need to take the ESL version of a history class, because history has a lot of vocabulary and it's very cultural, has a lot of cultural information that students might not know. So they can do a combination there as well. We're always pushing them to take the more rigorous version. And that's about it. Any questions?
Mr. Jerry? Okay. What pathway can an ESL student take for those elective to get to the capstone? What do they, what do they elect? What can they elect?
All of the pathways are open to the ELL students.
Okay.
So...
And do we have supports there for them in some way?
Well, it would depend on what class they're in, so they would stay in the ESL version of these core classes until they're ready to go out into the general education classes. But every pathway should be open to them. But of course, they have to have enough English to be able to take advantage of some of the classes.
Right, so...
We also have our...
Say freshman year, they don't have enough English, and they're taking these four classes. Do we just leave it there and let them build up their competency, or do we have some other supports that we put in those slots and then wait and give them more elective the next year? How would we handle that?
We're going to have to think that through.
Okay.
But their first year, when they know very little English, really their schedule is pretty full with taking their ESL classes, because some of them are double blocks, so we really try to give them a lot of English in the beginning. Their math block is double, and their ESL block is double. So they're pretty busy learning English as quickly as possible.
Sure.
We also have our ESL Summer School, which is intensive, and it's not like the regular Summer School, which is remedial, this is to accelerate our students in the summer. So this gets them even more quickly onto a pathway.
So to, another aspect of your question involves the state-mandated student success plans. And I think, I'm not sure how even aware the board is of this, I don't know if you've had a workshop on this in the past, you probably have not, but I think it was four or five years ago, in state legislation, every student has to have a student success plan. This, by the way, went hand in hand with the creation of the five-year and six-year graduation rate. And the thought was that there would be some students, and, you know, maybe an English-language learner, maybe a student in special education, that would take five or six years to complete the high school program of study. There might be other students coming into high school who could not do high school work from a reading and math standpoint, that would go into read 180, math 180, again, they would need more time. And these success plans are supposed to be developed by the guidance counselors, right? Now, in Norwalk and throughout the state, this has not been a problem unique to us. These success plans have looked remarkably the same, right? So almost everybody has a success plan that looks like each other's. And we, this is what we have to work on in terms of guidance in the future. We have to assess a student coming into high school at the ninth grade and say, what are your needs? What do you need to take? How long will you need to do this? So that you can get a student, for an English-language learner, for example, to a point where they could take a pathway. But it may take five years, it may take six years. This is why the state has the five- and six-year graduation rate. It's specifically, we're measured on that on our state accountability plan, and it's specifically designed for that purpose. So you don't try to cram that into four years and overwhelm the student and have them fail, and then they drop out. This is the whole purpose of it. So, again, this is something we probably need to spend more time with you on.
Yes.
And, you know, next year, we, several board members have requested that we set next year as one of our priority implementation steps, the study of our guidance program, both middle and high school, and the redesign of it, similar to what we've done this year with Gifted. You'll see the work of that next month. But again, this is very much on our agenda, and it goes hand in hand with being able to implement this in a way that where all students can be successful.
Yes.
Do we have many students entering ninth grade who have been receiving ESL services for a number of years?
We have some. Usually, these students are no longer taking ESL courses, they're in regular general education courses with support. We have ESL tutoring centers in all our middle schools and in our high schools to give them that support. But they've taken all the ESL classes, they're still having trouble passing, reaching the state mastery standard, so they're labeled as ESL students, but they're not necessarily taking any courses, they're just receiving support till they can reach that standard. So we do have some, yes, but we, but not many.
When do they go to the...
By the mind. So...
Because there is a distinction between an ESL student who's actively taking ESL courses and someone who still has that status, although they may not be still taking ESL courses, but they have to reach the state's ESL, the English mastery standard.
Right, there was, I guess it doesn't apply in Connecticut, but in some states, particularly the one I've worked in, unless you, for hessed it out, is the phrase, that restricted your high school offerings. And that, there was certain, certain amount of scandal that was involved in that, because it was, it made it very difficult to apply to college. And there was a lot of interest in bolstering the ESL population and preserving jobs.
Right. When we, as I said before, we push the students into the general education classes regardless of their status, and we just give them the supports, but we're constantly pushing them out.
That's great.
Yeah.
Can you tell me when the middle school and high school students attend the tutoring, the ESL tutoring? Is that during the regular day? Is it a scheduled time of day that they go, or as needed as a pull-out, or after school?
It's a little different in each school, but basically, students take one fewer related arts class if they need the ELL tutoring.
Okay.
And that's when they go for their regular tutoring. It's usually every other day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I alluded to this slide earlier a few times, because I think it's important, and I want to emphasize it, that the work is not done by any stretch of the imagination. We started and took a good step forward, a big step forward, but we really need to continue to build and expand our current pathways. We want to develop and grow our industry partnerships, our community partnerships, we want to increase our dual enrollment in each pathway, and I think over the next 12 months, we can take a step back and ask the content experts and the curriculum experts in this room to say, all right, what kind of interdisciplinary connections can we make with our current pathways that we, that exist? This was a step. And once we take a more of a helicopter view, we ask our content experts, all right, we've started the work, now what other connections can we make? And I think that will come to fruition over the course of the next few months and year. We're going to continue to explore other pathways, and there's obviously going to be some professional learning that's going to have to occur around capstone, around school counselors, that has started, that will continue on. So the work still needs to be done, but I think this is a really good start. I think it's exciting for our kids, it's exciting for our community, and it's really different from what we've had in the past and from what other people are offering around us.
So ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our regular programming for the evening. Our summary of the new Program of Studies, but as your interim CIO, I would be remiss if I didn't point out the next two or three slides, so I do have to go into detail there. One thing that is conspicuously absent from the document are pathways for world language. You may have noticed already as you're flipping through, and that is because despite four months of hard work and 7:00 AM meetings with Sylvia and Juan Carlos and Adam and Janine, we could not come to conclusion on the three things you see on the screen. We are going to embark on a year-long research study, partnering with both the College Board and perhaps the Center for Applied Linguistics, in which we will attempt to answer these three questions. First of all, what languages should we be teaching here in Norwalk? If you had asked me that 10 years ago, or even 15, and I would have said Japanese, but yet Mandarin has clearly surpassed Japanese as a language of importance. How do we place students into languages, and what techniques are we going to use to teach them, as Sarah asked earlier? And then a Norwalk-specific issue, what is the future of our heritage, or what the College Board calls our native classes? What will those look like in Norwalk in the future? What should we be offering? So before we attempt to, in a haphazard way, insert it into the booklet, we would like to take some time to study this for a year and make an informed decision. What does that mean in terms of the booklet? It means that all current languages will be status quo, they will be continued in their current formation at both high schools, and we will take a year to make a thoughtful decision about what languages we want to teach.
Could I just add to this? This is something we need external expertise on, right? This is a national issue, and there are so many issues here. So for example, it appears that we have a major gap by not offering German. German, German is the language of STEM. We don't offer it, right? Why do we offer Italian and not German? I'm not sure anyone can really answer that question. Italian happens to be very popular in our schools, but I'm not sure there's a logical answer, other than we've always done it.
Always done that.
And then we have the issue also of, how many years of language do we require? So if you look at our 20-credit current requirements, theoretically, we don't offer any. We recommend two, and we don't, we don't require any. The state, in its wisdom, because it doesn't measure language, is only mandating one in the state proposal. Now, we think that there should, we should have a requirement of three, because that's what colleges are requiring, that's what UConn, our flagship university, requires. We should be meeting the requirements of our, of our state flagship university, but there are lots and lots of issues here. We are very well-resourced in this area. You'll be interested to know, we have more language teachers than math teachers at each high school. And so, again, it's important that we do this right. You have 14 language teachers, 10 math teachers. So it's very important that we do this well, because again, we have, we have a very big investment going on, and lots of issues, lots of questions, that, you know, frankly, we're just not able to answer without some objective outside assistance.
I rarely use the same slide twice, but this is the very first slide we put up, and I did this to prove the point that the jump from 20 credits to 25 credits plus a capstone 26 credits is monumental. a capstone, 26 credits is monumental, and it will take a shift not only in resources, but in our commitment to staffing. So we're going to talk a little bit about that. This has been our plan for the last two years in Norwalk. Currently, our ninth and 10th graders are already on the 25-credit plan. However, our current juniors, those who'll be graduating next year, they'll be seniors, they are the last generation of Norwalk students to meet the 20-credit minimum state requirement. So from here on in, we will be requiring 25 credits plus a capstone, which is what you see quite clearly on this slide and in the booklet. Right at the beginning of the booklet, you see the 26-credit outline. What is this going to take? This is really going to take a minimum of about 10 teachers just to maintain this path. We're really reaching what you could say, even Steven, or, or being maxed out, as Adam and I were talking yesterday. We spent a few hours looking at this and kind of crunching the numbers. Without those additional staff, we will see more mandatory study halls. We will see seniors having less options, because we will have to front-load the ninth and 10th graders to make sure that they can take a minimum of six and a quarter classes. We'd like them to take seven or more. So when we think about this, we really want to look at, what would it take to fully fund the plan, the book that's in front of you, and what would it take to partially fund the plan? And this is the last slide that you see here. To fully fund the plan, if we're able to get the 21 teachers, which 21, by the way, mathematically is the correct number, which we've basically proved, Adam and I, and that's why we put that number into the budget back in November, because that's the minimum at 25 per class that we would need to offer all of these classes. If we were to fully fund the plan in 2018, 19, we could eliminate study halls in grades nine through 12, and every student, not just ninth and 10th graders, would be able to take 25 credits and have a capstone project. If we partially fund the plan, that will mean that ninth and 10th graders will get the option to take six to eight classes, and it will help us reduce some study halls in grades 11 and 12, but it will not eliminate it. If we were to partially fund the plan, the year after, only grades nine, 10, and 11, we'd get the 25 credits, and we would have to graduate another generation of Norwalk students on the 20-credit minimum. Now, that's allowed by law, but only for one more year. So in a sense, we're just kicking the can down the road by saying, well, we're not going to do it in 2018, 19. We would have to do it in 2020, because the graduating class of 2023 by Connecticut state law must have 25 credits plus a capstone. So time is on our side right now, but that will quickly evaporate if we don't take steps in that direction. Our goal, as you see on the slide, is that by 2021, a full two years ahead of the state law, we would like all of our students to be able to complete the rigorous program of studies that is sitting in front of you right now, and be able to take 25 credits and do a capstone. That will not only make us competitive in Fairfield County, but make us competitive throughout the state.
Craig, so under the partial funding model here, in the 20, 20, 20, 21 class, in the partial funding, it says no capstone. So when would capstone come into fruition?
That's going to require another budget discussion in the following year, perhaps even 2023. We'll have to do it by 2023, according to state law.
Okay.
So, so partial funding takes a three-year plan and pushes it into four years?
Correct. That was, that was my, my question on this, and never mind, that, that answered it. I mean, I'll, I'm just going to be blunt on this, if I could. We have a brilliant strategic operating plan. The entire team that has worked on this course of studies has done a phenomenal job. We are at the precipice, truly phenomenal for Norwalk's educational history, and I understand that we are facing down the barrel of budgetary constraints. But as far as I'm concerned, I look at when we're spending money and return on investment. This is return on investment tenfold. And I want to thank all of you for putting this together. As a Norwalk High School graduate, I wish I had this. I wish I did. But I am excited to know that we have the potential here as a board to have these opportunities for the children of Norwalk from here on out. And I would love for us to make this happen, come hell or high water, because this, this is, I don't know where this is. You want to talk about schools out there that are on levels of performance like us? We have our Wiltons and Westports and Westons. What does this look like for them? Anywhere near?
Ours is much more robust.
I, I would think so. And I think as something, as a big diverse district, full of not only the student body being diverse, but now having the opportunity to have an educational platform that is diverse representation as our students and as our city, why we would not take that opportunity is, is beyond me. So my bluntness is done now. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. I just wanted to give you a, a full and truthful summary of what needs to be done.
I appreciate it, Craig.
Thank you, Craig. Any more questions from board members or board comments?
Just one really quick one. I think we, we talked a little bit about the capstone early on in the presentation, and I just want to connect back to that, because I think, and it's not really a question, it's more of a comment and a statement at this point. My high school had a, we called a graduation challenge, growing up in Vermont, and it required 30 hours of community service, and you had to get a community member to do it. And there were some pretty phenomenal projects that came out of that. And of all of my high school experience, that graduation challenge, that I had the ability to come up with on my own, and worked in the community, provided more real hands-on work experience than I received from many of my early jobs, as well as working on my university's campus as well. And so, pushing towards the capstone, I think is absolutely the right decision. It's, it's real project-based learning, it's career learning, and so I commend Norwalk for, for moving that ahead and jumping ahead with it. And I look forward to seeing the results that, that the students come up with, because creativity is the limit with the capstones, so.
I, I want to build on what Julie said. My, my school did it a little differently. We had a Jan term, and every year, we did something that built towards a goal. So one year, I worked in a theater with their executive director. One year, I went with a business consultant and assessed the arts business. Another year, we traveled to England and sang all over the country for a month. But all of these experiences led me to my very nonlinear career path in life. And I, I heartily agree. I think those experiences were almost more powerful than some that I had in college. So I'm really excited that we're doing this.
Can't wait to hear more. And we're excited about capstone. Adam's done a great job. The reason we showed you that video is because we want to sensitize you to, and get away from the idea of a capstone being a thesis or a test. It's really the culminating experience for each and every one of our 60 pathways. So if you're a musician, you might write and perform your, your masterpiece. There are many ways to look at capstone.
I do want to acknowledge everyone in the room. I know I mentioned it before, but all of our department chairs, curriculum leaders, and everyone involved in this. If you could stand up, I'm not going to name everybody here, but there's a, a number of people from both schools. If you could just stand up for a second. I'm just going to say it again, the number of emails that were exchanged at all hours, and meetings, and times, and frustration, and, you know, sense of why, how come not, and then okay, and then just the willingness to eventually work together across town, even though that's how we do things in our house, that's how you do things. I can't, I, I just, I feel fortunate to be able to work with such a wonderful group of people, administrators, teachers, parents, all of, all of whom I was able to, to work with over the last few months. So thank you very much, and, and the fact that you're out here tonight at 9:07, and, and still continuing to be here. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And the Norwalk Public Schools owes a debt of gratitude to all of your hard work.
Okay, now we are going to move on to the second part of our work session, which is looking at the budget for 1819. I know a lot of you have to, well, you don't have to be teaching tomorrow. Stick around! I know it's been a long night and a long day, so people don't want to stay for the budget presentation.
Free to go.
Okay, we will now proceed to the second part of our workshop, which concerns the budget for 1819. And based on the city having now voted on a cap, whereby we were allocated increase of $5.5 million, and we had asked for about $9.9 million. We have to figure out how we're going to proceed, and so the superintendent is going to be making his recommendation as to how we get there in the next fiscal year. So it's truly unfortunate to follow an exciting presentation with, with, with budget reality. But in another sense, the way we handle this has everything to do with whether or not we will be able to continue to make progress, as exemplified by the implementation of the New York High School program of study. So it's in that spirit that I'd like to offer you some, a framework and some recommendations. I should say at the onset that this is designed to illuminate another, a number of issues for the full board. These recommendations will be vetted by the Finance Committee of the Board, and the Finance Committee will be recommending to you adjustments for tentative approval at your March 20th meeting. Tentative approval, meaning that we still have a chance with the Board of Estimant and Taxation to perhaps do better than we did with the mayor and county council. But again, we have to be prepared on this, and these recommendations require a lot of lead time and thoughtfulness, and, you know, from a, from a talent standpoint, there is, there is a lot involved. So on the first page is a framework that I'm recommending that you use. These are essentially guiding principles that would provide direction in dealing with the $4.4 million reduction that had been made into your budget request by the mayor and approved by the county council. So first of all, as much revenue as possible should be captured according to legislative intent. And I'll explain that when we get on the next page. But I think we have, we have sought to maximize our revenue based upon the work that our legislators did on our behalf in the, in the last session of the General Assembly. Second, we want to continue to increase student achievement, and to do that, the Board of Education's budget goals relative to the strategic operating plan should be preserved and sustained to the greatest extent possible. Third, we, we, where we have to make adjustments, we should make it in legacy staffing. Those are things we've done for the last 20 years, simply because we've done them for the last 20 years, in the following areas. Inacronistic positions that have been outdated by changes in technology and business practices. Clearly, secretary positions fall into, into that category. Very few secretaries in organizations anymore. Positions where Norwalk staffing has been in excess of standards and norms of Connecticut and Fairfield County school districts. And there are two areas here that stand out in particular for us as we compare ourselves to other districts. One is the number of teacher aides and paraprofessionals that we have, and the other is the number of councilors. The third expenditures that are not cost-effective in terms of the number of students served and their academic, academic achievement. And this brings us back to the Briggs Pathway issue that was discussed last year. Fourth would be contingency funding. These are the reserve teachers we've been keeping in the budget, related to class-size guidelines of the NFT contract. And those are guidelines at the elementary level. I think we have been treating them as though they are contractual requirements, but this is a, this is a source of, of, of funding that I think we have to, we have to look at, and this, you know, that, that could potentially involve going a little over the guidelines at the, at the elementary level. Administration expense, both at the district and school level, should be kept to a necessary minimum. Existing city services or state-funded programs should not be assumed for funding by the Board of Education. And then finally, in light of the most recent school shooting tragedy in Stoneman Douglas High School in Florida, school security needs to be strengthened, and our remaining vulnerabilities addressed. That is actually the topic of our executive session following this presentation. And unfortunately, ironically, this comes at the same time we have to deal with a budget reconciliation. But it, it provides us with, I think, a compelling reason to address this in the same context. So on the next page is a...
Next question is number, number four. I never truly understood. I understood the reserve teacher concept, the way it was budgeted, and I raised questions about. But my question here is the class-size guidelines relative to the elementary level we said, what exactly are the, what are the guidelines?
22 and 24. K2 is 22, 3, 4, 5 is 24.
Okay. And when you say extend practical, what are you envisioning?
Well, on the next page, you're going to see that I've made progress toward meeting the budget challenge by throwing in the four reserve teachers that we, we have had in the budget each, each year. Now, last year, we used all of them. The, however, last year, remember, that was when we were dealing with our big enrollment increase, right? Our enrollment increase this year does not appear to be anywhere in that vicinity. In fact, we think it's, we've, we think it's, it's going to be very small, based upon what we've already projected. And so, you know, by, by throwing in the reserve teachers, we may have one or two situations where we're a little over, where we are not able to divide classes, or put on aides, or add additional teachers.
What, excuse me, just because I'm not familiar with, what has been the practice? Let's say you have one elementary school, I'll make this up, four grade classes, each one has two kids over the guideline. You know what eight kids is?
If it's, if it's two, if, if all classes are effective, and it's two kids over, we would, we would put on another section.
Another section for the eight kids. There's no such thing as half a class minimum?
No, that's different than if just one class is affected, or two classes are affected. In those cases, we might put on an aide, a, a teacher's aide, to, but, but we try to treat these in some way. And again, it's, it requires keeping reserve positions.
Okay.
Okay, so if you go to the next page, I've tried to illustrate these seven principles. And let's look at, at revenue adjustment first. So you'll remember at the council meeting, after everyone spoke, and the mayor and, and county council had their caucus, the mayor came back and he mentioned a figure of $300,000 in ECS funding, okay? And he didn't have it exactly right, but he, he was in the ballpark. He had, he had the right concept. And I'll, I'll explain, I'll explain this, this to you. By the way, this issue came up in our meeting that we had with the city, and the budget director blew this off and said, oh, the governor is probably going to cut it. But there is now bipartisan legislation that's been reported out of the Education Committee that appears to, to have everyone's support, that is going to prohibit the governor from making mid-year cuts in the ECS. So we feel pretty confident that this is going to occur. That first $192,000 occurred before we had a budget, the legislatively-passed budget, and the governor made the first ECS payments to the cities. And because we're an alliance district, the first million comes to us, and so the state had to then retrieve that in the second payment. But what it did is it set the base, so when the base was carried forward, it was $192,000 less. So we are getting that money, is, is the point. And also, our ECS in itself, in and of it... And also our ECS in itself, in and of itself, has increased 196,000 for next, for next year. Um, so those two revenues, we need to take advantage of. In addition to that, um, we refreshingly, for the first time, we have a business office that, um, understands the excess cost grant and special ed. We have a chief of special services who can manage this multimillion dollar budget as well as advocate for it. And we have precise knowledge of, um, how we can, of what our excess cost grant will be, which we've never, we've never had before. It's always been a, a guess and a, let's see what happens. Um, now, this is one that also went up in the, in the, um, um, state budget approved, the bipartisan state budget. Uh, we have not taken all of it. We've taken a conservative amount because this is one that the governor could, could reduce. And, uh, there's never been a reduction greater than 20%, so we've taken the, the 20% off the top. And this is what would be left in the best case scenario, it would be 500,000. We think this is a conservative, uh, estimate. So that's the, that's the revenue. We, we recommend that we consider that first and just to take that into, uh, account first. And again, that number one and two, if you add it together, that was the figure the mayor was referring to in his, in his remarks at the, um, meeting. Um, second, second is, you know, the premise of, of, um, doing everything we can to achieve the budget goals related to the strategic operating plan. So there's one item here that would, um, I see the screen is off, but anyway, that would be, um, one half of the high school allocation. It's, it's, it's 2.1 million, uh, in your, in your, in your budget goals. This would be half of it. This would put us on the, uh, path of the four-year implementation.
The partial funding side.
The partial funding side of the, um, of, of that chart. Now, I have not taken any other, uh, budget goal out in this proposal to you. And so for example, I did not take out the 182nd day. The 182nd day is going to be important to us. Uh, in the negotiations we had with the NFT, um, we were fortunate to get the 182nd day for a relatively nominal amount of money, $250 per student, two, per teacher. That's a bargain. Uh, there were other things we paid more for, but on this, that was very favorable. It was probably the most favorable aspect of those negotiations to the district. The uniform calendar has been repealed. And so we would like to take that day and put it at the beginning of the school year so that our students would have an, an extra day of instruction before state testing. And in that sense, it's going to be very valuable to us at a very, uh, low cost.
Steven, you said the uniform calendar is...
The uniform calendar has been repealed.
What is the uniform calendar?
Uniform calendar was a, a law that required us to start a cer- certain time. Everybody in the rest area had to start a certain time. You had to have a certain number of your professional days on the same, at the same time. Uh, it was a uniform calendar.
It was all from Martin Newey, who they wanted for more rural districts to pool resources. It was a push for regionalization. But it never came from education. It came from some government committee. And that's why the school calendar got all messed up. So everyone had to start school the same day. You couldn't have a full February week break. You couldn't do this, you couldn't do that. And then you were, they removed almost all the holidays, so. Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Columbus Day, Veterans Day. I can't remember, there were five they removed. And then they gave you five floaters. So New Canaan and Darien used the floaters to give themselves a full week of, uh, February break. And there were all sorts of stuff, but everyone was supposed to start the same day. The thought was they could, districts could merge and share PD and transportation, whatever, it didn't fly.
And it was repealed as part of that blanket mandate relief bill.
Correct.
Good to know.
So, uh, so that's, that's why the only thing that I modified from your budget goals was the high school, uh, at the 50% level so that we could continue to make progress. We'll have fewer study halls next year. Um, the ninth and 10th graders, uh, can start with a 25 credit requirement. But this essentially takes a three-year plan and turns it into a four-year, uh, plan as it was on the, uh, chart.
Steven, if I could just jump in real quick, I, I understand the theory of the three-year and the four-year plan, but that's also given an assumption that we don't face another budget situation like we're in this year. Is that correct?
Right, and I'll, I'll get to, I'll get to that. Um, maybe this is a good time to talk about it. Uh, I have not taken the remainder of our, um, health insurance reserve and put it into this proposal. And that is, by the way, you have a strong recommendation from your CFO not to do that.
Correct.
Strong recommendation. If you did it, you would be at a 4% budget next year, just between contractual obligations and, um, health insurance. Okay, now the city's budget this year is at 5.1%. You heard the mayor say the other night that, uh, only 1% of it, or about a million dollars, was going to new positions in the city. Right? The other 4% is their contractual obligations and their, and their health insurance. So if we're, if we're, if we have any chance of finishing the high school, and what we have to do is we have to finish the high school, we have to do the other six elementary schools for the 30-minute extension, you've got to have that reserve next year, or else you're just, you'll, you'll have a 6% budget. And, um, you'll, you'll get, you'll get cut, you'll get cut to 3.7 again, or, or, or 4% and you won't be able to, to do it. You'll just be able to, and, and you know, there, there is a, you know, there are forces of the status quo that think that the only thing you should do is, uh, contractual increases and benefits for employees and never anything to make the school system better for, uh, for its students. So we have to resist that, we have to plan for that. But, um, I'm, I'm strongly recommending to you, as is Tom, uh, Hamilton, that, um, that reserve not be part of this budget reconciliation so that, uh, we have a chance of finishing, um, several of the key aspects of the strategic operating plan, uh, next year. So, um, let me, uh, let me go on to current operations. I mentioned secretaries. Uh, we have a lot of secretary positions for the benefit of new board members. Uh, there was a proposal by, um, Tom's successor, Rich Rudel, uh, several years ago to reduce a significant number of secretaries. Uh, that never happened. The superintendent left and the budget had begun. That was a proposal. Superintendent left in February. Mr. Rudel went to Wilton in, uh, June and it was, it was just, uh, dropped. Um, so, uh, at the middle school, we have guidance secretaries. We do not have guidance secretaries at the high school. So our high schools, we have 10 guidance counselors per school. We don't have secretaries. The middle school, we have secretaries. So the, um, the middle school guidance secretaries are slated for reduction here. Uh, also at the, um, high school level, our assistant principals or housemasters have their own secretaries. Now that is rare, right? Um, uh, even at, in our central office, we have high-level people who don't have, uh, their own secretaries. We share secretaries, right? Virtually everybody at central office shares, uh, a, a secretary. And so, um, what the proposal here is, there's eight of them. So we'd like them to share. So each one would share one, each, two of them would share one, uh, secretary. And that's more, I think, than an adequate level of, of staffing. And again, and this is just, there's just not a lot of secretaries in organizations anymore.
Steven, what, what did the secretaries, what are they responsible for?
I, I, I can't get, I'm sure they're working hard, but I can't, I can't give you, uh, you know, a, a, again, this is a, this is an era where people do things online and do their own memos on a computer. And, um, you know, um, this is just, this is just something that has been done for a long, a long, long time. Um, and, and so, um, that, that would be the, the other item. Now, in terms of guidance counselors, at the, at the, uh, this is one of the areas where we are in excess staffing compared to other districts. At the, um, high school level, the NEAS standard is 300 to 350 students, uh, per counselor. Uh, we're at 180 per counselor, uh, with 10 counselors at each, um, school. So we have two vacancies. We're anticipating a vacancy at each high school. Um, we'd like to leave those open. Uh, I think we'll do fine, uh, with, with nine as opposed to, uh, 10. Again, there is a need to study the role of the counselor, uh, how it's evolving to college counseling as opposed to the industrial guidance counseling model, which was basically sliding students into... We have the, we have the, um, success plan issue. Um, there's a lot that we have to do to redefine the role of the, of the high school counselor. Now, at the, um, middle school level, uh, most middle schools in our state, uh, 500 to 600 students would have a counselor. Uh, we have three, uh, per school. And, um, I think I've mentioned to you before that the, uh, state has the comprehensive school guidance program, which is basically social emotional curriculum that is recommended for, uh, middle school counselors to carry out. Uh, we have not used that, we have not done that. But relative to this, uh, recommendation, uh, our, our, uh, middle school counselors were scheduling the middle schools prior to this coming year. Uh, now, one would think that would be a responsibility of the principal and assistant principal. Uh, in Adam's other life, um, he has been spending the year training, uh, our middle school principals and assistant principals to schedule their own schools. Uh, certainly a responsibility that they should have had long before then. Our middle school guidance counselors are not doing that any longer. Um, you know, they have, you know, feedback has been, they've been spending about a third of their time on this. So again, I think we'll do fine with two instead of three. We have a vacancy at Roten. Um, we would leave that open and we would have, uh, reductions of one each at, uh, Ponus. Um, Nathan Hill and, and Wes Rocks for, for a total of three.
Dr. Artemokey, good question. So when we're looking at the state norms, is that the average state norm or is that for like districts with similar student demographics?
Um, we, we're going to have to gather more information on that. Um, but I would say that, um, you know, during the first phase of middle school design, the schools we visited, they had one. Uh, I think most of our neighbors would have, would have one, possibly two. I don't think you'll find anybody with three. And I don't think you'll find anyone who, who have guidance counselors scheduling the school. Um, so again, I'm, I'm assuming if they were spending a third of their time, uh, we could keep whatever else they're doing in terms of, of counseling of students in, in, in place.
Thank you.
Until we can redefine the, the provision.
To Julie's point, I have a similar thought that we have in middle school, uh, you know, a demographic that is of particular high need. And so if there's any way, and it's this cart ahead of the horse thing, I know, but, um, to think about the numbers in terms of counselors that are in the high schools and maybe shifting in point fives and things rather than like...
That, that is also possible.
Yeah.
Again, we need to study this issue. I'm hoping we can do that comprehensively next, next year. But I think these interim steps will, um, will not create, um, you know, a great deal of difficulty. Now we return to the issue of kindergarten staffing. And you had considered last year, uh, reduction of all the kindergarten aides. What I'm recommending here, um, is, um, there, there are, by the way, 42. Um, and what I'm recommending here is a reduction of 30, um, of the aides and retention of 12 interventionists. So we would keep the folks who have a BA degree, uh, and have been trained as interventionists. Uh, and so you, in a, in a case of three kindergarten teachers, there would be a fourth member of the team who would be the parent interventionist. I'm reluctant to go the whole way on this, although there are many districts that have no kindergarten aides. Um, and I think this might be a good, a good place to rest in terms of a compromise. I would also point out that the, um, the, all of our schools are, are following the ECRE model now. And the ECRE model has two interventionists, K through three. So by doing this, we'll have three interventionists. Uh, K through two, I'm sorry, K, K through one, two.
Sorry, Steven, Dr. Artemokey, what, how do you envision implementing that? So if there are 12 remaining, would you see them as, um, only in some classes? Or would you see them shared amongst classes?
No, they would be shared, uh, with supporting the students who need the greatest amount of...
Okay.
Okay, so we, we've got two points of leverage here in terms of student achievement. The greatest one is the, uh, the results of the preschool readiness, uh, assessment, uh, the PELI, right? And you recall that you have, uh, that, that we actually have a priority implementation step in improving the PELI. This is why you had the report, uh, from the early childhood council, uh, their strategic operating plan. Um, Ms. Keys has been, um, a, uh, very strong participant in that, uh, group. Um, so in terms of the greatest leverage, it's readiness for kindergarten from preschool, right? Next greatest leverage is what would happen during kindergarten. And so, um, there will be hopefully an increasingly smaller number of students each year as the PELI scores rise, of students who will need intervention in, in kindergarten. And that's who the interventionists would, would work with.
So these, these, the 12 who would remain are not classroom aides. They're intervention aides who would deal with kids specifically in the...
Right, now, right now, they're intervention aides who do classroom duties. And so they're not doing intervention all the time.
Right, so the classroom, and then they would just be interventionists, okay.
They, they, they would be in this model.
Yeah. If things work out a little better, this is something I would be reluctant to, uh, to cut in this, in this, in this situation. Of course, high school is a priority, it could be that, if it's much of that. But, um, concerning that, what happens sometimes. And I think our role involves you having a BA, uh, there would be, uh, students.
Well, that's a, um, you know, that's a, that's a, a very good point and that's a, a long-term issue for us, right? Um, we really should not be hiring any pares anymore who do not have a BA degree. Um, so those, those days are over where you could work as a pair with a high school diploma, right? We need it, need at least two years of college, ideally a four-year degree because the four-year degree would also allow you to substitute for a teacher who is, who is absent. Um, and, you know, you're right, it's a talent direction. That's definitely the direction we should, we should go in. The reason this is on here though, is that we have, we have one of the largest number of aides in, um, in, in the state. Um, the Hartford School District, which is twice our size, has, has 300 aides. We have 200 aides. Um, if you look at percentages, the, um, um, Center, National Center for School Statistics, uh, has an average of, um, 2% of pares to, to, uh, teachers. Uh, we're, uh, we're, we're well over 16%. So, um, we have a very, very, and I think this goes back to those days where the district was treading water, right? And shifting responsibility from teachers, fewer teachers, more pares. And, you know, that's kind of what we're, what, where, where we're dealing with now. What we need is more teachers. And we need more highly trained expert staff working with our, with our children and just not the custodial function of...
I could just add on to that, I mean, I think as far as the early childhood committee, our main goal obviously is having our children ready, uh, preschool, from preschool kindergarten ready. After saying that, I think back to Bruce's point, having our assistants or our paraprofessionals, I think at a minimum, an associate's degree in early childhood and then having the full, uh, going back to school and earning their four-year degree. But, you know, I'm thinking these interventionists that are coming in and, and kind of helping these students, I worry about more the reading, the writing, math, especially kindergarten, because we've raised the rigor. It's, it's a lot more restrictive for some of our students. I mean, the rigor is up, it's higher, they're five, they're coming from a preschool environment into kindergarten. So I understand the budget restrictions, but I'm hopeful that we can keep more of our paraprofessionals.
I don't, I don't want to give you the impression of recommending the, you know, the charges. How do we conform to, uh...
The current reality.
The current reality of the, of the budget. So I think the way to look at this is not to try to... So I think the way to look at this is not to try to offend it or to refute it on the basis of its own merits, but to ask yourself, is there something else I'd rather cut than this that I find less important than this?
Dr. Adamowski, and I know we have a few more points to tick off here. I said it bluntly earlier, and I'll reiterate my bluntness. Item number two, I do not want to see on this list. Is there a potential that, you know, we can continue through this list, of course, but could our actual CFO and yourself present us a list or the Finance Committee a list that eliminates the reduction in high school? Gives us other options? Because that right here, we just saw a presentation that lasted several hours that was incredibly thoughtful and so much work is put into it. And I believe that if we do this right now personally, it is going to stymie this increase to a point that is unnecessary and almost gives us a, why did we even spend the money? Because it could really potentially hurt us much longer in the coming years.
I have not found a way to do that that does not create greater damage to the district. So you know, when I look at this list, I can say to myself that, you know, a number of the adults will need to work longer, harder, differently. But basically, we don't have a big impact on students and we don't have a big impact on student achievement. And we're able to address the majority of our goals, which will enable us to continue on the trajectory of higher achievement. I don't know how to take another million dollars out of the existing budget without doing significant damage. And I have thought about that, Eric. I've labored over this and slept on it and talked about it within our staff. And we haven't been able to identify another million that does not do significant damage. Yet, you know, maybe where you say that we're doing something that will impact on children in another area.
If I can say, the thing that I... Not that I like this, because I don't, but what I appreciate about it is that it spreads the hurt around a little bit, like I think if... And I loved that presentation so much and it made me so happy to see all of those things that... Like this beautiful palette of offerings, right? And if that were preserved at the expense of all of these other things happening in the middle schools and in the elementary schools, you'd have a lot of upsetness at the expense of a lot of happiness. And so I think as best we can balance is the balance.
And I think also the positive is that we have compromise. There is compromise in here. And I think you want to impact the classroom the least restrictive way. I think we don't... If we can avoid that, obviously, we've got to reconcile.
So number five is the discontinuation of greatest pathways. We know this program has to end at some point because it can't stay in that building, which can't be remodeled or renovated because it doesn't meet the standards. And I think this is the time that we have to do that. We will have a blended learning classroom in each high school by the end of this year. So those students can't continue their program. We can't keep them on a flexible schedule the way they are now. But the great advantage of having them in the high school is that so many of these students could benefit from taking subjects in special areas, which they cannot do at any rate. So we're not doing justice. So it's free from educational standpoint. Two classrooms at each. And what we will do is we will take regular high school staff and we'll stagger them. So one period will be English, math, science, social studies. So those students that aren't taking the blended classes to catch up or to get back on track, we can continue that. But again, they'll have more of a high school program because they'll be able to participate in the special areas.
Well, when these kids were... When the program was originally set up, we didn't have pathways. We didn't have academies. There were no other options like that, so...
So I think this is the time that we're going to need to do this. Number six are the four reserve teachers that I mentioned earlier. Again, I think we're in a better position this year to take a risk on this than we were a year ago. The NAREMAC Family Resource Center was defunded by the state. Finance refunded $100,000 back. Maybe take that out again. And then the snowflowing that we were going to do for DFW at two high schools, that was taken out of the original budget just to make a point. And then nine are the middle school sports, including transportation. There are two district office positions. And again, the next two, 10 and 11, relate to that principle of keeping the administration at an absolute minimum. So we have one extra assistant principal, housemaster. We had that at Thorak High School consideration of NECA gaining students. Now, a full 400 students have redistributed themselves from the West Side to NECA. So there's no justification for keeping the extra fifth administrator there. And in terms of central office, we're looking at two positions yet to be determined. One, I think we're going to seriously add merging HRAS system personnel with the student information system. And a single individuals as opposed to two individuals, monitor that. And then there will be another position. You're aware that when I became superintendent, I cut four central office positions and a year after, I cut another one. So at this level, we've got 10 where we would start. But I think that's necessary given these other directions. And then we would put back in 457,000, which we'll explain to you in executive session why we're going into executive session so we don't discuss our security vulnerabilities. And then there's an employment expense that is on the conservative side because we probably have enough turnover number in these areas to avoid that. And so we see a total of about $4,310,000, which affords to the funding of $5,505 of your $9,000,000 budget. And again, this is a concept with examples. And then again, you and your ways of can find better things to reduce. You know, this is why you're not an elected board of education. But I wanted to be able to make these recommendations to you because as I look at this list, again, nothing here is desirable. It's nothing that we can do unless we had to. It was based on the cut that we're coming up with. But I can also look at this list and say, you know, not a great impact on our students and it preserves our ability to have our students continue better by funding the high-leverage activities of teaching. I'm sorry, I don't know where to go in terms of another budget. Again, without doing damage. Because right now, we have a lot of adult adjustment in this. Not a lot of impact on students. Everything else you looked at, it's a great...
Dr. Adamowski, two questions. Does this budget reduction plan include the third installment of the special education funding?
Well, yes, the mayor said we're taking that.
Okay, just making sure. And also, one thing I remember being on a cut list in prior dire situations was athletic directors. Why is that not on the list this time?
We looked at that two years ago. And you determined that the savings would be minimal. I think there was something like $30,000 savings when we looked at a single position. The two really are teaching positions that are augmented by a department head stipend and an athletic director stipend. These are big jobs, 1,700 student high school. And you know, at minimal savings, you had one person at two schools. I mean, I think it would be overwhelming just in terms of keeping up with the number of sports. You'd have to be full-time, first of all. So you couldn't be... Our athletic directors teach two periods. You'd have to be full-time. And whether or not one person can keep up with that, we don't see any other high schools our size doing that.
What's the current expenditure for the two of them?
I think between 130 and 150, I believe.
Each?
How about each?
That's sound.
But again, you have to replace their teaching periods.
Right.
So you have to hire a teacher just to replace their teaching periods. Then you've got the administrative salary at the full-time athletic director. Now you're assigning that twice the number of teams in two schools. And again, we looked at it, I can't recommend it. I don't think any... I don't think our schools could even do that.
So I mean, I echo the comments of my fellow board members and yourself as well is that none of these are desirable cuts. I also agree that... I appreciate how they have been spread out to target different aspects of the educational system. I think tight fiscal times do give us a chance to reflect on efficiency and effectiveness. And so it does seem like there are some things that have been continued for years and decades and it is time to make some changes. And this unfortunately may be a reason to make some of those changes and improvements. That said, if after the budget goes through the BET process, an additional million dollars is utilized, found from most likely the rainy day fund, what would you... How would you propose, seeing that, would you decrease some of these cuts or would you try to implement in the additional part of the high school? And I say this also thinking about my concerns that if these reductions are made this year, this gives us very little wiggle room in future years to make some of these additional cuts. So I'm concerned that there may be a perception that if the Board of Education was able to find all of these things to cut this year, that next year, we could do the same thing. These cuts and reductions really are creating as lean of a system as we likely can have without impacting student achievement. So I'm trying to keep all of that in mind, but know that there's still a fluid process ahead of us, that some additional funding may be in front of us. And so I'm wondering how you would propose to utilize that.
You know, I would certainly leave that to your judgment, but I would stick as closely as I could to the goals of your strategic operating plan. So I guess my first preference would be to put that right to the high school, try to get back to a three-year plan as opposed to a four-year plan.
Thank you.
Bruce?
A question and a couple of comments. First, a question. Occasionally, I would, you know, look from a distance in past years and say, well, why can't you find any cuts in my school operations? Whether it's, you know... So if you run out of money for oil in May, just budget trends or something like that, do you feel that that would be not responsible way to proceed, to look at all the operations, find some efficiencies, perhaps be a little bit less conservative on projections at certain costs?
I don't think we're conservative on projections at this point. We have, you know, until you even get some new buildings online, we are an awful big situation in terms of energy inefficiencies. We have the all-electric academy school, which takes the utilities of two schools. We have Columbus that's barely heated by an old boiler that has the size of this room. We're in terrible shape in terms of efficiencies because we have not addressed these issues in the past. And I think, given that, I think Tom Hamilton has done just yeoman's work in trying to come very close. As you notice from the last year's budget, we did not have a real balance until this. We were very close to the mark. So no, I don't think we could take that chance. If we've been having any problem, it's with unanticipated building operations issues. So for example, at Brian McMahon last year, a new chiller went out. We didn't have air conditioning for six days and they had to make a $200,000 expenditure to replace the coil in the air conditioner. That kind of thing happens to us all the time now where we don't budget. And so we have to make economies in other areas just to...
And it might be worth mentioning, Stephen, that the reason we had that problem with Brian McMahon was because they were so cheap when we did the renovation, value engineering. Any normal building, school building would have a backup. There was no backup.
See, I'm used to a little bit of a different approach. Board member asks for a special appropriation when there's a major screw up in the school. I don't know what the cost was at Brian McMahon.
$200,000.
$200,000, but you managed to find it in your own budget. A lot of other senior departments will initiate the special appropriation process.
We have an emergency... I forget what we call it, Stephen. We have an emergency in this office.
Emergency PL.
Say that again?
That account. We have an emergency account for it.
I just wanted to mention one thing as well. I know the total request of all the departments put together is $199,964. And even before we brought it to you guys, they were quite down for the $193 change EBR to the $194. So every department's EBR requests were actually a lot higher. We had to shave it down just resolutely and reasonable to give. So it wasn't inflated at this point. That's what we made like $1,000.
I would, to speak to Mr. Kimball's point, at the planning commission meeting last budget cycle, the chairwoman said, why aren't you utilizing the special appropriation function for some of these sites? She brought it up in regards to the electrical issues at Fox Run and Cranbrook. So I think that there is an opportunity there should we need it, but obviously we don't want to plan for a special appropriation.
Well, my question to that is, and I appreciate your point, Ms. Meyer Mitchell, but if we had to go through the special appropriation process to get 200 million... 200... 200 million, God bless me. It's been a long night, folks. Take two. 200,000 to fix Brian McMahon, how long would that have taken? We'd have to go through many channels.
Yeah, so it's a five-month process.
And that could still be rejected at the end of the day.
Can you pay for it and then go through the process to...
Look, I don't disagree. There are ways that's for the special appropriations. It can happen as fast as you want, as slow as you want. You're right, you may not get it. And I'm not sure, you can't really budget and plan for special appropriations. So that's true. But then to get to my question, just to add my comment, when I look at the cuts, you know, no one likes the record consideration process. It's crazy thing. I hope the Board of Members and the Taxation Services and whatnot. I think we all agree on the SOF, headway to the SOF. Try to maintain that at all costs. And a number of those things, you're absolutely correct. They do not have a direct impact on student achievement. However, I want to return to the other thing on the kindergarten, put it in context. A lot of things I see happening in the district. There's the stuff that goes on, which we are focusing on and moving in the classroom during September to June. Where we've been making a lot of headway and where we realize that if you're ever going to truly resolve the narrowing of the achievement gap, which wanted to disappear, you've got to deal with two deficits. A deficit that a child has when a child enters kindergarten and deficits that accumulate over the summer. I think we're doing an excellent job of both, especially in the summer. And we have to continue that. But the intersection, look, I've witnessed kindergartens and the intersection of kindergarten and preschool and transition, that's a critical... That's really critical. So just from my perspective, if... So, just from my perspective, if, if you, if you maintain the framework about summers or sacrosanct, we've got to do whatever we can to ensure that school year, one way or another, is extended. The other is the, the huge gap of sometimes insurmountable gaps that kids enter kindergarten. And we know, we know from our own data that they are behind. And we don't have full, we don't have control about, a lot of what happens those years. So, whatever we can do in the way of V A's interventions, however, I think that's always got to be a priority, those, that, that intersection to make. Having said that, I get it, and if we have to, we have to. That's it.
One item that's also glaring at me, glaring at, I should say, is number five, the discontinuation of Briggs Pathways blended learning program. This has been on our budget for years. It's been back and forth. And I think the savings is huge. I think the time now, I think, to have these students come back, whether we have some, I'm not sure where we'd have these students, in one of our high schools or both of our high schools?
Both of them.
Both. If I'm not mistaken, is it about sixty students at this point?
There are sixty.
Sixty-seven? Sixty-seven.
There are sixty, sixty-five, sixty-seven in the rolls. Maybe given dates.
Okay, so between, around fifty. I think also working with and learning with their typical peers. I think it's just the environment, which with their pathways and academy programs, I think now is the time to make that change.
Absolutely. We would also eventually expand the city's tax base considerably, which will help us craft budgets in the future. That piece of property has been sitting there for ages and people are just staring at, who has a high school there in a place like that?
And the location is not very safe for our students. So, there's a whole bunch of differences surrounding that.
So, again, that's, that's my, hopefully fulfilling my responsibility to provide some direction, recommendations on this. I hope you'll, I hope you will adhere to the assignment principles. They find a better way, agree or disagree, that's your, your job as a board. These recommendations will be vetted by the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee will then be making recommendations in full, or the purpose of giving this to you tonight, so that you can give input to the Finance Committee members and then also be prepared to evaluate recommendations of the Finance Committee. The timing of this is such that on the twentieth, you need to make a tentative set of reductions or reconciliation. Tentative because we make it better with the, with the B E T in England. But we don't, we don't know that. And again, we need to lead time on the number of, of issues. And as well as if we're doing less at the high school, that affects our planning for next year as well. And the high school students, what they can register for and so on and so forth. That would, that would be marginal.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Adamowski. I think that concludes our work sessions. We would have public comments. I know, I think there's at least one person here for public comments. And then, we will end the meeting to go into executive session. So, if there's anyone who does have public comments, please come forward.
And if you could please state your name and address for the record, I will give you a notice when you're at thirty seconds and you have a total of three minutes to speak.
Mary Beth Becker, twenty-eight Morgan Avenue. So, I think, I want to talk on the first item. And it's very clear, lots of thought and lots of work was put into it, lots of great ideas out there. And I'm all for increased engagement. I guess my concern in kind of listening to everything is just the concern, are we pushing everything down lower and lower? Like, you know, we want kindergarteners to read now and, you know, it sounds to me a little bit like we're wanting eighth graders to pick a major. And I think maybe I just run a bit counterculture. I mean, I picked a Quaker school for my kid, K through eight, mostly because she was a quiet kid and small classes were going to be what we thought was good for her. But also, that time to be a kid, really focusing on social emotional skills and experiential learning and student-centered, good stuff like that and not constant testing. So, that's just kind of the educational choice that we made as a family. And then, when she came to high school, she was then eager to learn and learn for learning's sake and really retained her curiosity, not so much, you know, a bunch of testing things. So, you know, and that, that's like a lot of trust as a parent to not know how your kid is doing because they're not taking standardized tests. She didn't take one until eighth grade in high school. She's, you know, this is probably my last, you know, meeting as a parent speaking, because she's a senior now, near the top of her class and was elected by her peers, co-president of the inner society as kind of a quiet kid. So, so, so I think for me, like, the thing that really, really sticks out that concerned me is that whole quote about no unrelated electives? Because I feel like some people make connections between things that seem unrelated. And, you know, she's in C G S, you know, and has loved all that and all the international stuff, but right now, what's lighting her up is, you know, an anthropology class and a psychology class that, you know, she wouldn't have known if she didn't get the chance to take some unrelated electives. So, I guess just my concern slash, you know, as you're thinking more through it, how, like, not everybody maybe should be on a path and maybe I'm just resenting the idea of being put into a box when I'm not a put me in a box kind of girl. So, you know, that idea of high school being the place to explore a wide variety of things, especially while they're free, you know, taking A P classes to understand rigor before you get that for-credit F like, you know, I did in college, you know, high school is that time for exploring. So, I'm just concerned the extent that we push rigor down and down and down where we're wanting them to do college in eighth grade. You know, but that's like a bigger question, what's the role of education, job training versus knowledge and all of that? We can debate all that. And then, just my only last thing would be.
Time.
The logistics and the parity and the whole cross-town thing and how are you going to balance all that? So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your assistance. Do we have another speaker? Oh.
I just want to say, I'm so proud.
Name and address for the record, please.
Joanna Cooper, Shadow Lane. I just want to say that I'm so proud of the direction that you're going and with all these options that you can have in high school. And I never took a traditional path in high school and way back when, we did have options like this in my high school. And they really changed my life for the better because I wasn't one to be able to sit still for very long. And I had lots of options where I didn't have to do that and I could create a really unique program for myself. So, it's so exciting to me and I am all for rigor. And I just hope that you can remember the gifted as well and the special and bring them along on this adventurous journey. And I, I think we are blessed to have such a great Board of Ed and an outstanding superintendent. And I am very angry with the city that does not fund you guys. And I'm going to continue to fight for funding because I don't think we've ever had it so good. And I'm going to be really upset if they screw it up. And so far, they have seemed to be doing that. And I have been here, honestly, for over fifteen years, fighting this same stupid argument year after year. I feel like we're beggars, you know, we're begging for equality education. And there is nothing more important for a city than the quality of its education and the citizenry. And it, my child is out. So, I, I'm still fighting because I believe in it that much. And I, I want the opportunities for all children because they are our future. Keep fighting and keep doing the great job that you're doing. And thank, thank all of you for the hard work that you did as well. Thanks.
Thanks for coming, Joanna, thanks for your comments. Any other public speakers? If not, that.
That concludes public comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And we will take a quick five-minute recess.
We need a motion first.
Do we need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Chair, to move us into executive session to, for the discussion of security matters.
Mrs. Keys, you're seconding it. Are there all in favor?